Good evening. Welcome to the San Gabriel City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Close session report. Our city attorney will now give the close session report.
Sure, Madam Mayor and members of the council, the board met in closed session at a prior, the meeting that ended immediately before this meeting with one item on the closed session agenda, which was performance evaluation of the city manager. The city council discussed that item, but no reportable action took place. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Now, next item, Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by me. So please rise. Face the flag and place your hand over your heart as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item.
Roll call, Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Vice Mayor Liao.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Pooh.
Here.
Okay, we will start with some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel 3 and our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org no later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
All right, next item, approval of agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda? I hear none and I see none, so the agenda order is approved. Hey, next item.
Presentation, COVID-19 briefing. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace, Police Chief Harris, and Economic Development Manager Dominica Megardichin.
We'll start with our fire chief, Wallace.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Liao, members of council. This is Steve Wallace, part chief for the city of San Gabriel, and I'll have an update tonight on some COVID statistics as well as its operational impacts on our fire department. As I'm sure you've been seeing in the news lately, there is some light at the end of the tunnel, it appears, and perhaps some good news, especially in Los Angeles County, as all of our leading indicators are showing a decrease across the board in the number of cases reported daily, the number of deaths and the hospitalization rate. Our test positivity rate has gone from over 20% just over two weeks ago down to 11.1% today, which is really, really good news. ICU capacity across LA County, although it may not seem like much, is up to 2%, and that's come up from 0%. In the city of San Gabriel, we currently have 2,856 confirmed cases, and sadly, we report this week 157 deaths. Within the fire department, we've had four members confirmed with cases of COVID. They've all recovered, except we have one out right now who's doing well in his recovery. Our PPE stores are good. The skilled nursing facilities in the city seem to be maintaining very well. There's no critical supply shortages or staffing shortages reported for the next seven to 15 days in any of our skilled nursing facilities. And we're comfortable enough with the decrease in call volume and the improvement in hospital offload and wait times that we've taken RE251, which was an additional ambulance placed in service since January 9th, out of service as of last week. So our call volumes are getting back to normal. And with that, that's my end of the report for the evening.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. Chief Harris. We're having some... Oh, there you are, Chief. We can't hear you, Chief Harris.
Madam Mayor, perhaps we can skip ahead. This is Mark Lazaretto. Perhaps we can skip ahead to Dominica Megardichin, and she can give her economic development update while Chief Harris works through his technical difficulties.
Okay, great idea. So Dominica. Dominica having some trouble too. Oh, there she is.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Dominica Megardichin with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm providing you with a update on the applicable eviction moratoriums as they apply to our residential and commercial tenants in San Gabriel. Staff last provided an update on the eviction moratoriums to you and to the community at the September 15th, 2020 council meeting as part of the CARES Act funding and summary of current resources, protections, and protocols. As you know, the city passed a local urgency ordinance to prohibit evictions of the city's residential and commercial tenants due to the impacts of the pandemic, and the local moratorium was in place from March 31st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020. To qualify for protection, tenants must have notified their landlord of their inability to pay rent before rent was due or up to 14 days after the due date and must have provided documentation of their inability to pay rent as a result of the pandemic. The moratorium protected tenants in that landlords were not permitted to begin eviction proceedings against qualifying tenants while the ordinance was in effect, and landlords could not charge penalties or late fees for late payments. When the city's moratorium expired on June 30th, 2020, San Gabriel residential and commercial properties were deferred to and protected under the Los Angeles County Moratorium. To qualify under the county moratorium, tenants must have notified their landlord within seven days after their rent was due that they were unable to pay rent due to loss of income related to COVID-19. And under that protection, tenant had 12 months following the end of the moratorium period to pay back past due amounts. Currently, as the city doesn't have a local ordinance in place, we continue to defer to the Los Angeles County moratoriums. Qualifying commercial tenants are protected by the LA County Moratorium, and the county is deferring to the state's moratorium, AB 3088 for residential tenant protections. As of January 29th, the governor signed Senate Bill 91 into law, which extends the state moratorium and its protections through June 30th, 2021. The county is in the process of updating its information following the California Legislature's passage of SB 91 and will publicize additional information when it becomes available. Residential tenants protected under the state moratorium must pay 25% of rent due from September 1st, 2020 forward, paid in a monthly or lump sum when the protections end. The state does plan to use federal funds for rent relief for some low-income tenants. The low-income renters with strong payback background will get priority for that rent relief program, and payments will be made to landlords who agree to forgive partial rent. As I mentioned, the county moratorium applies to our qualifying commercial tenants only and is set to expire February 28th, 2021, and may be extended on a month-to-month basis. The payback period is over six to 12 months based on the number of employees that the commercial tenant has. While a nationwide eviction ban does exist, it does not apply to California and other places that have the same or greater protections in place. None of the moratoriums have relieved tenants of their obligation to pay rent once the protections are lifted. And depending on the moratorium and the period of time, they are granted periods of time after the expiration of ordinances to pay their past rent. In anticipation for the changes at the state and federal levels, staff held off on updating the city website with all of this information and the time periods and what applied to San Gabriel until the most current information was available. And now that we have that, we will be updating the information on the site to provide the updates shared with you tonight. With that, staff's available for any questions.
Thank you, Dominica. Chief Harris, you're back.
I am back. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this is Gene Harris, the police chief for the city of San Gabriel. Our briefing, our COVID briefing is very brief. We are still operating at 100% service delivery capabilities in the field. Although we have had seven exposures, confirmed exposures, positive exposures in our organization, all seven have gone through the quarantine protocol and have returned to work, and we're experiencing no impact to our service delivery. We've also had no criminal impact with regard to crimes associated with COVID. That's a good thing to hear, and we're continuing to receive voluntary compliance from members of the community with regard to health orders and other local ordinances as may be applicable, and we want to thank the community for that. And that is the end of the police department briefing, as I said, very brief.
Thank you, Chief Harris. Yeah, are there any council questions, comments? Vice Mayor, now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first question for Chief Wallace. You know, you just reported 175 deaths in San Gabriel, but I was trying to find out, does this 175 include the East San Gabriel area? That's, you know, San Gabriel County, not in the city of San Gabriel. Do you know anything about that?
What I can tell you in this one minor update is 157, not 175, which is still far too many. I think we'd all agree that anything with a legal address in San Gabriel is counted to our city because the 91776, 91775 zip codes do include portions of the unincorporated county. I do suspect that we are seeing numbers from that. I know City Manager Lazaretto has reached out and is doing some research with the Department of Public Health and their chief science officer to actually figure out if that is playing into effect. What I can tell you is it does include residents in our skilled nursing facilities who have their address legally changed to the address in San Gabriel. So in a roundabout way, I don't have solid information from you. We're looking into it, and hopefully I can bring something back.
Okay, one thing that I'd like to find out is how many deaths from the nursing homes? If it's 100 or 50, I don't know.
I believe that was in the range of about 40 or 48. I can get that in just a minute for you. I can have that by the time we're done with the questions.
Okay, great. I think that's, you know, easy to figure out because I would think that deaths from nursing home should comprise about 70% of the total death. But anyway, that's my way to figure out, you know, who, you know, who actually lives in the city of San Gabriel. Okay, one more question, because we all heard about these variants, you know, from UK, from Brazil, and from South Africa, and actually make the things less effective. You know, because I've heard, I don't know, it's true enough. Efficacy dropped to 49%. So there's a talk. You know, I want to verify with you. They were proposing a third shot, a booster shot. You know, our firefighters already had two shots, so is there a possibility, you know, say, three months or six months down in a row, they need to take another shot?
That's a really good question, and that's something we're very interested in as well. The third shot you speak of has been specifically talked about with the Moderna vaccine. With all three, with the two vaccines that have the emergency use approval, the Pfizer and the Moderna are both saying they believe they still have high efficacy against the variant strains. But Moderna is looking down the line, perhaps doing a booster shot, just like what you said. I don't have any information that says that we're going to do that, that science is still being looked at. If it is something we're going to do, we will probably organize that again through the LA area chiefs, just like we did with the initial round of immunizations, and make sure folks that have received the first rounds can make, have that made available to them.
Okay, thank you. Question for Dominica. You know, I just received the email from League of California Cities. So there's a second round of funding for the COVID relief for small businesses, and I believe that was in January, and, you know, only allow seven days for business to file. And they award, I don't know how many, total, it's 5,000, 15,000, and then 25,000. Depends the size of their gross income, but second round application starts today. So this morning till 8th, that's next Monday. And so another round of application, but they mentioned, you know, if you already apply, you don't have to reapply again because it's in the system. But, you know, for those that haven't applied, they encourage them to apply. So you confirm with that information because I think...
Yes, of course. Thank you, Vice Mayor. You're correct. The California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant Program, while it opened the first round, those that applied under the first round do not need to reapply under the second round. The information can be found at HTTPSCAreliefgrant.com. The round two opens today as of 8:00 AM and closes February 8th, and the selection notifications will take place February 11th through the 18th. And that is the opportunity for small businesses to apply for grants anywhere from $5,000 to $25,000.
Okay, thank you. So another question is, you know, because there's a nonprofit organization in San Gabriel Valley, and it's called PACE, and they are helping small business owners, especially in the low-income area. You know, one thing, I was talking to CPA because they had a sort of big seminar last weekend, and they attract hundreds of people, attend that seminar, and Treasurer Fiona Ma was there and talking about the other sources of the funding for small businesses. And yeah, because, you know, they can help our small business owners to apply for PPP, and I think that'd be great, especially for, you know, restaurant owners. So I think that's probably the best way our economic development can help them.
Yes, Vice Mayor. The economic development team will be partnering with PACE. We'll be bringing two webinars to the community, one in English and one in Chinese in the coming weeks. And that makes the different PPP and other resources available to them. And PACE does have a number of resources available, but also brings the ability to help facilitate some of these applications. So businesses that may not know how to best navigate through what's available to them and how to apply would have that facilitation assistance through PACE and some other partner agencies.
Right.
And once we confirm those dates, and that effort will definitely be promoting that by way of the city website and our e-newsletter that goes out to our business community.
Okay, thank you. Last question, you know, because we want to help the small business, especially the employees under 20 or less, because if they have to go back to work, they have to test negative, you know. And there's a new place, and maybe I just want to find out which department that can promote this because this is one of a doctor's clinic on Las Tunas Drive, 316 East Las Tunas Drive. And so they offer free tests, and 12 hours after 12 hours, they can find out a result. And it's very simple, and you just use the, I have something like Vial and use saliva, and you just drop it in their office, and they give you the results within the day, okay, 12 hours. So I think it's a good thing, you know, if they can offer free, quick tests, and then this will help, you know, all the businesses to gradually open their businesses. So I think if our department, Economic Development, can work with this doctor's office, but I don't know, you know, I don't know which department can actually get involved with something like that, maybe community services. So I, yeah, I'm just asking you your opinion.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. If you have that information and can share it with us, we'd like to learn more. We are in the process of reviewing and permitting a couple more testing sites that will be opening in the community. I'm not quite sure if they will be going off of insurance or paid services, but we are in the process of permitting and reviewing permits so that we can stand up some additional testing sites and make that available to the community.
So their service is absolutely free. If they, you know, the people that have insurance, private insurers, they can build them, but if they don't have any insurance, they can cover that too. So it's a free service. So I think that's a good thing to know. You know, we were talking about the variants. Now the test is not so accurate, you know, we know that. And certain countries in Asia especially, they require three tests in a row. And, you know, you've got to show that these three tests all come up negative. You cannot say, well, you know, just one test and that's it. No. And that's probably the reason we were kind of overlooked because I heard maybe so many people with false test results, and they actually are systematic, and they have the virus, and they don't know, and they, you know, pass on to others, their friends and family members. And so it's, it's a, it's hard to control that. So I think that's something that we can help our community with more tests and more, I would say, reliable and free tests. So it's something that we can help, especially the small business owner. Thank you.
Chief Wallace, you had the answer to the Vice Mayor's question earlier?
I do. Vice Mayor Liao, you had asked about the number of skilled nursing facility deaths within the city. And this has been six facilities, one of which is in the county area. So one of which is in the unincorporated area, a total of 75 deaths, which that's about a 47% rate with our deaths in the city. We can, if you'd like to back out the eight deaths from the facility in the county, that drops, we're into about a 42, 43% rate coming out of skilled nursing facilities. So it is significant.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Harrington?
No, I'm okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, your mic was on. Let's see, there's any other questions? I see none. Okay, thank you, everyone, for the briefing. Next item.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. And Madam Mayor, we do have two comments for this evening. The first reads as follows. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Hawes. I served as El Monte City Clerk from 2013 to 2018. Since 2015, I have been a whistleblower on Andre Quintero and Team El Monte's embezzlement of $10 million from the El Monte Promise Foundation Scholarship Fund. I have interviewed dozens of El Monte residents who have privately confirmed that promised funds were used for fraudulent trips to Vietnam and Haiti, a bogus consultant in Salt Lake City, house repairs, and other criminal activities. I have myself been interviewed by the FBI about two dozen times. Documents proving the embezzlement have been submitted to the FBI and the District Attorney's Office and are now available to the public online. I am asking the San Gabriel City Council to call out these crimes and protect the vulnerable residents of one of the poorest cities in Southern California. El Monte children, who should have been provided with college scholarships, were robbed. Andre Quintero and Team El Monte members must go to prison. If you have any questions, please call or text me. Thank you. And the URL to the website and the phone number have been provided. They are available from the City Clerk Department upon request. The second comment is from Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunez and reads as follows. To our city council members, 2020 was a year like no other in recent memory. Navigating a global pandemic, political unrest, and worldwide protests for racial equity and justice filled our lives. City officials throughout the country, including in San Gabriel, spent the last year drafting resolutions and making impassioned speeches saying they believe that black lives, black culture, and the contributions from black people should matter as much as any other. I am disappointed that when given such an obvious and easy opportunity to recognize black culture, there is not a single acknowledgement of Black History Month in the city's newsletter, the mayor's newsletter, or on the city's website. There is no reason that our city cannot acknowledge Black History Month in a meaningful way this year. There are literally thousands of programs and events already planned around the country that are open to the public. The city has put together a virtual celebration for Chinese New Year on February 12th that is significant and is already being promoted widely on the city's social media platforms. Acknowledging the significance of Black History Month in the city's newsletters and on the website and providing links to resources would be another incredible message of the priority of celebrating other cultures and ethnicities in our city. I invite everyone to learn more about the contributions of African Americans by going to the Smithsonian's National Museum of African American History website or, closer to home, the city of Pasadena's website and participating in one of their many offerings during the month of February. One of the duties of the HIER Commission is to provide education to advance its purpose of promoting equity, access, and diversity. There are so many opportunities to educate our residents and uplift and affirm the beautiful diversity of our city. Whether a group makes up 2% or 60%, all contributions should all be celebrated. And Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. Madam Mayor, we have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Thank you. And would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? Councilmember Pooh?
Yes, I'd just like to ask a question on item D.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Pooh?
Yes, so this is the resolution to, there's a resolution to set the date and time of the new HIER Commission. But I was wondering, and maybe this is a question for our city attorney, should we, shouldn't we also include language about the appointments of the individuals? language about the appointments of the individuals to the commission? Can't remember if we've done that with other commissions where, when the new appointments are made or when, you know, terms expire and so forth, if we do that by resolution or that's just somehow done more administratively.
Good evening, Council. This is Marilyn speaking. In the past, when we were to approve the appointment for the commission, we only did it by action. It was never done by resolution.
So by city council action?
That's correct.
And I see, and that's included in the recommended action here. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, the issue is if you point them by resolution, then every time you changed it, you'd have to do a new resolution.
I would like to move approval of the consent calendar.
I don't have a second.
Second.
Okay. And I see no further discussion, so Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liao?
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Public hearing. Item A, hold public hearing and adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero four for proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2022, I'm sorry, 2021 to 2022, Community Development Block Grant Program and Budget Plan. Presentation will be made by Management Assistant Claudia Gallin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Claudia Gallin, Management Assistant for the Economic Development Division. The item before you tonight is regarding the federal Community Development Block Grant Program and budget to be allocated to the city in the upcoming fiscal year 2021 to 2022, beginning July 1st, 2021. Next slide, please. As the participating jurisdiction, the City of San Gabriel receives funding through the Los Angeles County Development Authority, also known as LACTA. The purpose of CDBG funds are to meet national objectives and to serve low and moderate income populations. In addition, there are certain exponential limits in two categories. First, a fifteen percent cap in the public service category. Second, seventy percent of the funds must be used to benefit persons of low and moderate income levels. Next slide, please. The proposed CDBG budget is approximately three hundred thirteen thousand a year. And years before, have been used toward code enforcement for neighborhood improvement services, as we call it in San Gabriel. Youth services and a street improvement project are recommended for continuation. The activities and proposed funding are as follows. Code enforcement at eighty-five thousand, youth services at forty thousand, the street improvement project at one hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars. This is including the additional six thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars of funding available this year that staff is proposing to allocate toward this activity. Both the code enforcement program and the youth services program will remain at their same allocations as last year. And lastly, while our projection, while our projected allocation is three hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars, I'd like to note, has retained one percent of our allocation, which is not reflected in this total as a precaution for a possible reduction in CDBG funding. If we find that there was no reduction in spring, LACTA will make the remaining three thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars available, which staff also proposes to put toward the street improvement project program. Next slide, please. And I'm just gonna briefly go over the proposed activities and how CDBG funding benefits these programs. For code enforcement, this addresses the decline of property maintenance, substandard housing and health and safety issues in low to moderate income block groups. For youth services, staff has transitioned from our traditional in-home program to offer virtual after-school recreation programs and activities for children in second through fifth grade. And the street improvement project provides construction of street scape improvements in the following areas. Walnut Grove Avenue from Las Tunas Drive to the South City Limit and Broadway from Walnut Grove Avenue to the East City Limit. Next slide, please. The city has also traditionally received an allocation of approximately twenty thousand, six hundred dollars from the County Board of Superior Fifth District for an after-school program. Assuming the city does receive the funds again this year, the recommended actions must acknowledge the receipt of funds. Next slide, please. And for the council's knowledge, this is the CDBG map of eligible service areas for the upcoming fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And next slide, please. And before I make my recommendations, I do want to mention that it is imperative that an action is taken this evening, as we have been given a short extension through this week to submit our planning and budgeting documents to LACTA, which were originally due yesterday. So to conclude my presentation, staff makes the following recommendations to council. Adopt the attached resolution number twenty-one dash oh four, authorizing the allocation of CDBG funds for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 from LACTA for activities and projects described in Exhibit A of the resolution. Carry over any CDBG funds unspent at the close of fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and recognize the receipt of 2021 to 2022 CDBG program funds awarded to the city in the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget. Recognize the receipt of an estimated twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, six hundred thirty dollars of CDBG funds from Supervisor Barker. If funds are approved by the Board of Supervisors for the after-school program, allocate any fiscal year 2021 to 2022 CDBG funds in excess of estimated funds to the street improvement project and authorize the city manager to execute contracts with LACTA for the allocation of the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 CDBG program and make adjustments as necessary to reflect the actual allocation of funds to San Gabriel. And that concludes my presentation. And I am available at this time for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, does any council member have technical or factual questions for staff to clarify? Move for. I see none. I will now open the public hearing. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not received any public comment for this item.
Okay, well, now I'll make the announcement. I now close the public hearing. The time for public comment on this item has ended. We will now proceed with council deliberation and discussion. Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay, so I, I think everything's very clear. And I'd like to make a motion to to approve the recommended action items.
Second. I'll second it.
Okay, Assistant City Clerk, can you please take the vote?
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liao?
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
New business item A, Resolution Number twenty-one dash twelve, rescinding Resolution Number eighteen dash thirteen and adopting rules of order for the conduct of city means in order to accommodate the newly formed Human Equity Access and Relations or HERE Commission. Madam Mayor, I will be presenting this item for you this evening. So Mayor and council members, before you, is an item to update the rules of order for conducting public meetings. While incorporating recent changes to boards and commissions, staff also identified various other changes to facilitate meeting flow and better clarify the wording. All proposed changes have been detailed in the agenda report. A particular note are the following changes. Incorporation of the new HERE Commission, to which you made appointments and set the meeting schedule earlier this evening. Deletion of the successor agency oversight board, which has been disbanded. Please note that the wording of commission slash board has been retained and standardized throughout to recognize the potential for future boards, even though the city has none as present at present. Updated membership number and quorum for the design review commission to reflect changes council recently made to the composition of that commission. And the addition of a section to the council meeting order for continued business to indicate that some council deliberation has already taken place on these items. Also presented for council consideration is the option to discontinue having a second general public comment period as it is rarely utilized. And, Madam Mayor, that concludes the report.
Okay, does any council member have any factual questions for staff to clarify about the report? Yeah, I see none, so I'll make the announcement now. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received one comment. It is from Dr. Jennings Nunez and reads as follows. To the City Council, City Manager and Staff, it appears that the current restrictions put in place to prevent the spread of COVID-19 will continue for many more months and possibly for another year. No one knows when we will be allowed to hold in-person meetings. In addition, most scientists predict that another pandemic is inevitable. Since virtual meetings will likely continue to be a part of organizations, I think it is important to establish a code of conduct that includes virtual meetings and promotes respectful interactions. Just as the City Council and staff members would be visible at in-person meetings, they should be required to be visible in the virtual setting. It should be required that videos be turned on during the meeting for City Council members. City staff should also utilize their video when making presentations or when they are a significant participant in the meeting. This shows respect for the office, for your colleagues and for the public who attend the meetings. And that concludes the comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll now start with deliberation and discussion. Anyone like to begin? Well, my only comment was, I still don't think we need to have the word board. We have no board. We probably won't ever have a board. So I just found it very confusing because in one section it seemed to delete it and then another section included. And I just think it's not necessary to have. So I would like to suggest we just remove board. And if we ever do have a board again, then we can bring it back. But we have none. And we have no reason to think we're going to have any in the future. Regarding the second public comment, I'm comfortable leaving it there. I don't think it's, it's necessary to remove. I think it's still helpful for those who can't make it in the beginning, have at least the opportunity to provide their public comment at the end of the meeting. Those are my only two comments about this, this item. Councilmember Pooh?
Yeah, I'll just say that I agree with both of your comments. And I'd be prepared to take action on this, on this item unless other council members have any other comments or questions.
I don't see any. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and make the proposal then?
Yeah, I'll move adoption of this item with the amendment to strike the word board throughout.
Okay, and I'll second. There's no more discussion. Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liao?
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Motion passed by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Item B, Acceptance of Annual Audit Reports, fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. Presentation will be made by Finance Director Kahula Kula.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is Will Kahula Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight, we'll be presenting the annual financial statements or the comprehensive annual financial report. And we'll also be presenting the reports prepared by the auditors. Next slide, please. In accordance with the city's fiscal sustainable policy that was adopted in May of 2019, a formal report is required to be made to the City Council with the auditor present. We do have the auditor present tonight, Terry Robertson, who will be making some comments on on the results of the audit. Tonight's presentation, there'll be two main areas of the presentation. One, in the beginning, we'll take a look at the auditor reports. Then we'll give the auditor an opportunity to make some comments. And then from there, we'll roll into the financial reports and we'll do an analysis of the financial results for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020. Next slide, please. So our city auditors are Moss Levy Hartsenheim, a firm of certified public accountants. They were hired as part of a competitive process back in April 7th of 2020. This is the first year of their audit. There's four reports that that they completed. And we'll take a look at each of these four reports and the results of what they stated in their reports. Next slide, please. So the first report is the Independent Auditor's Report. This report is included, is part of the comprehensive annual financial report. It's a report from the auditors that where they define the scope of the audit, the responsibilities of both management and the auditors and the process of the auditors. And the main part of the report is a opinion that they provide on the fair presentation of the basic financial statements. I'm happy to report that the auditors issued an unqualified opinion on the fair presentation of our basic financial statements. However, they did emphasize two matters in their independent auditor's report. The first being the status of the general fund's fund balance and the second being the potential adverse financial impacts from COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. Letter B, the second item that the auditors produce is a communication letter that is addressed to the City Council and the City Manager. It discusses various topics relating to the audit, including difficulties encountered during the audit, disagreements that management may have had. If management was seeking other opinions from other CPA firms, other findings and other issues. Overall, the audit went well and there was nothing significant reported in the communication letter. Letter C is a report by the auditors on internal control and compliance that was encountered as part of their audit. It communicates any deficiencies in internal controls and compliance. And I'm happy to report that there were no deficiencies in internal control noted, as well as no instances of non-compliance. Finally, the auditors do a recalculation of the city's calculation of the annual appropriation limit. Some of the auditor's recalculation of what the city prepared, there was no exceptions to the city's calculation of the annual appropriations limit. At this time, I'll give the auditors an opportunity to make some comments. On the, on the audit, we have Terry Robertson from Moss Levy Hartsenheim, who will make some comments. And then after that, we'll roll into the analysis of the financial results. So Terry.
Hello, as noted, my name is Terry Robertson. I was the manager on the engagement. The engagement partner, Craig Hartson, wanted me to express his regrets that he could not make it today. But unfortunately, his father had recently passed and he had some unavoidable family matters he had to attend to. So this was our first year audit. For the most part, it went pretty smoothly. There were a few wrinkles related to COVID, a few delays related to the closure. A few delays related to the closures and things like that. But overall, working with the city's personnel went fantastic. The biggest delay in the timing was actually our office having an outbreak of COVID. And myself and multiple engagement members. All being out of work from pretty much the end of November through half to two thirds of December. That was.
Thank you, Terry. Next slide, please. So now we'll move into an analysis of the financial results for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, 2020. So for the for the fiscal year, the city had actual revenue. And transfers in of 39, just over $39 million, which was 98% of final budget. There were total expenditures and transfers out of 38,942,000, which is 93% of the final budget. So that left us with a positive net change in fund balance of. Eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eleven. The positive change in net change in fund balance, we improved our our fund balance situation from a negative. One million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty to the better one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine. This is the general fund. So the next four slides, we'll take a closer look at the general funds revenues and expenditures. Next slide, please. So on this slide, we take an aggregated view of general fund revenues by type. We compare what we received in 2019. As compared to what we received in 2018, 19, or 2019, 20 as compared to 2018, 2019. So overall, total total revenues and transfers in were higher by 283,000. A good portion of that increase was related to transfer in from the retirement fund of $859,000. So overall revenues were lower by 576,000. The big driver of that decrease was related to our taxes, which we'll look at in a little more detail on the next slide. Kind of had two forces working against each other. We had COVID-19, which was impacting sales tax and a transient occupancy tax. But then on the other side, we had property taxes which were improved due to the increased property values in our community. Next slide, please. And on this slide, we take a line item view at the general fund revenues and we look at the. The significant revenue line items that changed from the fiscal year that just ended to the prior fiscal year. The the one at the top, Propay Exchange was an increase of $750,000. In the fiscal year 1920, the city was able to exchange Propay money for general fund money. We talked about property taxes. Due to the increased property values, they were higher by $366,000 in fiscal year 1920. The property tax in lieu of BLF was higher by 361,000. We had a workers' comp reimbursement that was higher by 224,000, which was a one-time single large insurance reimbursement. We had charges or charges for services. Both were up and down during the year. Building permits were was higher, public work fees were higher. But then on the other side of that, we had plan checking fees were also lower. And then we had the two major impacts in the middle. Due to COVID-19 of transient occupancy tax was lower by almost $800,000. Down to just over 2.2 million and sales tax was lower by 651,000 and that came in at 3.7 million. Now we'll move on to the expenditures in the next slide. So this is an aggravated view of our general fund expenditures by function. Overall, expenditures were higher by $955,000. Broken up between the various functions of the city. The major drivers of our of our general fund expenditures. Are is are no surprise. It's our retirement costs. The CalPERS normal cost, the unfunded accrued liability that we have to pay on the pension liability as well as our. Retiree health insurance. Other expenses that were also driving up our expenditures was our. Insurance costs related to our workers' comp liability and our in our our workers' comp insurance and our general liability insurance. And then outside of that, you had some operational expenses that were lower. Specifically like various various operational expenses like office supplies, special events and overtime. Next slide, please. So here's the line item of our general fund expenditures that had major changes from the from the prior year. As we as we talked about, our CalPERS payments were higher by $645,000. Workers' comp insurance premiums were higher by $294,000. General liability insurance premiums were higher by $256,000. And then our retiree health insurance was higher by $157,000. So that's that's basically the the analysis on the general fund. Now we'll now we'll move on the next slide to. The other funds or other issues that the city is facing. So there's two major issues that that the financially that the that the city is facing along with the the challenges in the general fund. On the on the on the left part of the slide, we have the negative operating cash of the general fund. So basically, the general fund is has ran out of cash. It doesn't have enough cash to fund operations. And currently has had to borrow 8.5 million in cash from other funds in order to continue operations. The reason to make up for that reason is caused by by is twofold. One is because the negative fund balance. And the second part of it is because almost 6.4 million is is restricted. Is restricted cash and cannot be used for operations. The the cause for that restriction is because those funds are pledged as collateral for. The loan the city had taken out to construct the public works building. Two ways to. To alleviate ourselves of that restriction. One, if we pay off the loan or two, if we refinance the loan under different terms. And then moving on to the right, we have our pension and OPEB obligations. Our net pension our net pension liability is increased by 3.9 million, going from 67 million up to 71 million. Our net OPEB liability is higher by 1.6 million to 46 million. And on the net pension liability, you know, the city is making their required amortization of the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. However, due to interest on on the debt, along with rolled in changes in assumptions. And the true up of actual results is continuing to drive that liability up. And then kind of the same thing with the net OPEB liability is interest on the debt along with additional benefits being earned by employees as they put service time in. Next slide, please. And then on this slide, we take a look at the other funds of the city. The city has other major funds along with a group of non-major funds. We have a major retirement tax fund that's used to pay for retirement-related expenditures. It had a decrease in general fund. It had a decreasing fund balance of over 600,000. The fund balance as of June 30th, 2020 was just over 1 million. Development impact fees. To account for fees restricted restricted for city facilities, the fund balance increased by 591,000. With the ending fund balance of almost 5.8 million. Measure R Fund, which is a half-cent sales tax to fund transportation projects. The fund balance decreased by 313 with an ending fund balance of nearly 1.1 million. Other grants to account for various federal, state and county grants had an ending fund balance of 679,000. Sewer Assessment Fund. Increased fund balance by 937,000 with an ending fund balance of nearly 6.5 million. And then we have non-major other funds, which is a makeup of 15 funds. That account for various restricted activities or activities that we just want to kind of separate. There were revenues of 5.1 million along with transfers in of over 1,6232. Expenditures of 5.3 million, a positive change in fund balance of $829,000. Within any ending fund balance of just over 8 million. And then finally, on the on the last slide. Next slide, please. The the city for their fiscal year, June 30th, 2019, received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement. In financial reporting for the 30th year in a row. We have submitted this cafer for the for the award again. And then on and on acknowledgements, I've been here one month, so I didn't go through the audit and I wasn't part of. Ensuring that we had a clean audit, so I want to give acknowledgement to the hardworking people in the in the finance department. Who contributed to maintaining the correct processes and putting all the the schedules and everything together. For the auditor as well as putting the cafer together as well as the full San Gabriel team. Who is required to get through any audit. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions that you may have as well as Terry from Moss Levy and Hartsenheim. Thank you.
Yes.
Just wanted to make two very quick comments at the end of Will's presentation and Will, thank you. That was a really great thorough job. Especially considering you've just been on the job for a month. I do just want to point out to council and the community that this report covers through June 30th of last year, as Will said. We will be doing a full summary of the fiscal year that we're in now through December 30th. We'll be doing that two weeks from tonight. So we'll be able to give you a much better picture of what the impacts are. To COVID and our expenditures for the current fiscal year, so we can do a deep dive into that next week or excuse me, two weeks from tonight. And then the second thing is is we will have a proposal on that same night. For a way to refinance that public works loan that is causing us so much of a of a burden on our general fund balance at the end of the year. We will still have a negative fund balance, but we will not have to borrow for the additional 6.3 million or 6.4 million dollars every year that we have to. So both of those will be coming up two weeks from tonight. And with that, Will and Linda and our auditors stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Does any does any council member have any factual questions for staff to clarify before I ask for a public comment? I see them. So on that, now make the announcement, the time for public comment on the signs now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not received any comments on this item.
Now opening it up again, back to council for deliberation discussion. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to drill down a little bit and I understand, and thank you, Mark, for saying that, you know, we'll be doing more of a deep dive into current fiscal year finances in two weeks. So for this year ended 6/30/20. You know, I want to do a little bit more of a deep dive into the net OPEB liability. I believe in that year, we had we stopped making additional payments to the OPEB trust. In order to help with that liquidity, you know, situation that we are talking about there with the restricted cash, the CD that serves as collateral for the public works facility loan. So I'm I just wanted to hear from management and maybe it's Will or Mark or Linda. If at one at some point in time, you would recommend that we continue to make the the extra payments that OPEB trusts to keep that net OPEB liability down or or not. My guess, it's a trade-off between, you know, current cash and future liability is what it's how I understand it, but. And of course, we, you know, we're doing everything we can to. I'm not only respond to the COVID situation, but also then to, at the same time, try to. Reverse that negative general fund balance. But I'm looking forward to hopefully some point of more normalcy and some recovery of revenues. Wondering at what point in time if or if, you know, there would be that kind of recommendation to. Make additional payments to the OPEB trust to keep that OPEB liability down and if there's any sense of when that might be.
Thank you, Councilmember Pooh, and you hit the nail on the head when you talked about us trying to balance the COVID issues, our negative fund balance and. Getting our fiscal sustainability going forward. But the short answer to your question is yes, we will be recommending as soon as we can afford it that we start to re. Energize that OPEB trust fund. Because that's the only way to get ahead of that obligation. It will come as part of the balancing act. What we've done over the past two years with the council's help is stripped out all of the. Optional funding in our budget in order to balance our budget and backfill our fund balance as much as possible. But when I say optional, some of that isn't really optional. It's things like funding the OPEB trust. It's things like putting money aside for vehicle replacements. It's all of those rebuilding funds that a fiscally sustainable city has in place that we don't have right now. So going forward, as we get to a positive fund balance, we will be making recommendations to the city council about. Balancing, building that reserve fund up, but also with. Paying down some of these other obligations, whether it be OPEB or whether it be some of those other sinking funds that we need to to build up. And then finally, as we are also looking to do things in the future with employees. As far as salaries and benefit increases and other things, we would also look to look at ways where we can have our employees help to cover some of the costs of those old. Costs in the future because we do have a very generous benefit. That'll be something that obviously would have to be negotiated and part of some other package that we work with the employees on. But that is another method for drawing down that liability.
Yeah, with respect to that, can you help us all understand? What portion of the OPEB liability increase is due to simply rising healthcare costs versus, you know, other components?
It's a it's a actuarial. Calculation that I don't pretend to fully understand the details of. But just to give you an example, the biggest part of it is a projection of all of the future costs. Should every single employee in the city of San Gabriel who's eligible for that benefit retire? And so there is some slough built into that because not every city employee will be here long enough to invest those benefits. Also, not every employee will be receiving those benefits at the same level, at the same amount. So all that to say, there is a portion of that that is due to rising health costs. But the bigger portion of that is due to the sheer number of employees that continue to be. Eligible for that benefit and that will be paying for in future years.
So this number is meant to be sort of the. I mean, I understand it's actuarially adjusted, but it's intended to be what the maximum number would be. As you've described it, I mean, because all those other conditions that you mentioned, that everybody retired all at once and everybody was eligible. I mean, obviously, those 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 aren't true. So. When the, just so I understand too. Is there ever a true-up to what the actual expenses are?
Every year, they do that recalculation and they adjust it for the new factors of the age of our employees and who is eligible. And then they also factor into that the market rate. But just to give you an idea of the sort of inaccuracy in the calculation. You'll recall that two years ago, when we didn't make that payment. And our payments up to that point that the year before, I think we had made about 150 or $250,000 payment. Let's just say 250,000 because. That's off the top of my head, but it was a very small payment. It's what we could afford in 2018, 2019. And when we didn't make that payment the next year, our numbers went up about $20 million out of not making that one payment. Because part of that cost anticipates that you're making those OPEB trust deposits over future years at the rate you're making them now. So there's a lot of inaccuracy in that, and so it's not something that we have to pay down. All at once, and we recommend that we do. We don't recommend that we fully fund it. But at some point, we need to start paying that down and putting money aside so it can be invested to pay those. But at some point, we need to start paying that down and putting money aside so it can be invested to pay those future costs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I, I just wanted to, I had the same questions as the Councilmember Pooh and Mark, thank you for clarifying about renegotiating the, the, that loan, because that is making us cash poor. And I know that's something that we've been trying for years to undo. What, what, how realistic is especially with the COVID environment of renegotiating?
It's very realistic, the firm you'll recall a few months ago when we did the financing for our vehicle lease. The five or six vehicles that we leased. The company Holman Capital that did that lease for us, they're very familiar with our finances. Because of the, the underwriting that they did for that lease. And so I approached them last year and asked them about the possibility of doing this and they are fully committed to it. They've given us two proposals that, one of them is a lower payment with a longer repayment term, which would cost us more in interest over time. And the other one would be a shorter repayment, but fully amortized in a 15 year period. And we'll talk about both of those options in two weeks and I anticipate that I've asked Lance Holman and he has reiterated that we would be able to close that loan in approximately 60 days, so for sure before the end of the fiscal year. And that's my goal is to get it off the books by the end of, of the fiscal year, so when we close our, our books and next year, when we're having the same conversation. It doesn't include that, that 6.5, I'm sorry, 6.2 million dollar CD.
Great. Okay, Vice Mayor Lau.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So that's good news, you know, because we've been talking about, I don't know, four or five years already, you know, about this refinance for public works yard or new buildings. And, and we can free our CDs, you know, because the time was our CDs. And the interest rate is so low right now, you know, I, I hope the company that we work with, you know, with 15 years amortized long, maybe 2%. So, yeah, so it's a, it's a it's a good time to do the refi and, and we have that cash available to pay down our general fund. Another question is about the the retirement, you know, the pension. San Gabriel is such a fortunate city that we have this retirement benefits since 1948, so it's been a while. And we, we have, this year we have nine million to pay down the pension. But I still don't understand how, how it works, you know, because we're supposed to pay down, but then this year we still have $4 million increase. So that's 71.2 million. So it looks like, yeah, we have the retirement benefits, but still our patient liability is kept going, it kept growing up and up. So I thought, you know, I, I've been talking about this patient obligation bond. And if we can borrow some money with a low interest rate, you know, maybe I, I, I think maybe 2, 2 and a half percent and paying just the interest that charged by the CalPur, 7%, I think still charged 7%. So just saving the interest difference, you can save a lot of money. So why we're not looking into this, you know, a pension obligation bond?
A great question, Vice Mayor Liu, thank you. So I have two, two comments for you on that, first of all, your, your first question about the interest for the refinance on our loan. We'll present it to you next week, but the, the rate we've been given is 2.75%. So that's really good and as good as any of the cities around us that have issued bonds, long-term bonds. And cities that have better credit ratings than us, so it's a very competitive rate and it certainly is one that we're wanting to jump on before rates go up. I'll tell you that just philosophically, I'm, I'm opposed to issuing bonds because of the more debt that we have and the uncertainty of whether PERS is able to invest that money and achieve rates that are higher. But that being said, I don't want to be the one saying no to all the bond folks that that come and approach us without having a discussion in front of council, because I think that's a, a decision that all of us need to make together with educated information in front of us. So before the year is out, before the fiscal year is out, Will and I will bring before the council for a study session in, in formal basis. I have a, a trust in, in one of the premier bond issuance companies that are doing business with a lot of cities throughout California because of the interest rates these days. And the reason I trust him more than, than others is he would tell us if it didn't make sense to do it. And not everybody would do that, because as you can imagine, they make money based on closing these hundred million dollar loan, I'm sorry, bond deals. And so I, I would want to work with somebody that I have the trust that they would say, no, just keep doing what you're doing. Although we also, we want to always save as much taxpayer dollars as we can. Right now, our PERS costs are not a burden on our general fund. They may be in a few years, but I have a call in a couple of weeks with PERS and their investment results for the year are pretty good. And the reason those benefit, those costs went up last year is because they have not reached, achieved their their investment returns that they promised on several year. And so if they're able to do that, our UAL goes down. If they're not able to do that, then our costs go up and those continue to go up. If we can ride it out for about 12 years, the numbers start to decline as the changes that Governor Brown put into place several years ago. Some of those changes will start to take effect and our numbers will go down. And if we're able to weather the storm until then, our retirement tax will more than make up for that and that's a sure thing. All of that to say, it's something that we will have a full blown discussion on where you can all ask questions directly of the expert. And they're working with Monterey Park and Arcadia and West Covina and Montebello and several cities of, of our size and ilk around us. And I'm confident that they'll be able to answer questions in a way that we'll be able to come out with a group decision on whether that's something that we want to pursue or not.
Yeah, okay, well, because I, I know dozens of cities in Southern California are doing this, you know, pension obligation bond. And some of them saving millions, tens of millions of dollars, so I, I thought it was a good thing to do, but yeah, but maybe, Will, Will, can you tell me that in your previous work, have you done anything like that?
I've never done a pension obligation bond, I was, the only discussions I had were kind of at the beginning points with an underwriter and with a financial advisor. But have not, so I've looked at it a little bit, but have not done a pension obligation bond.
Okay, thank you, thank you, well, yeah, maybe it was just keep looking at as, you know, and explore with pros and cons and see what, what we can do, thank you though, thank you so much.
Are there any other questions from anyone?
Just had one question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Harrington.
And I think it's clarification, Mark, you made a statement that we borrow $6 million every year, we're borrowing that from our own funds, correct?
We are, Councilman Harrington.
Yeah, because I think members of public may think we're borrowing money every year, because some people hear that we borrow, it's actually from ourselves because of the money that's, that's illiquid.
Thank you, that's entirely true, we borrow it and it's basically for one day and it's on a, a paper transaction. We borrow it from development impact fees in our sewer funds. And then that then goes back into those funds for projects, but it does mean that we have to have at least that amount in those funds in order to make sure that we're liquid, but you're exactly right.
Got you, I could, just for some people to make it sound like we're borrowing money every year, over year, over year, we're not.
We are not.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, I just want to follow up, I, I just wanted to say that I find the comparison of actuals versus final budget that I think begins on page 87 of the CAFER very helpful and then also, I just wanted to, and, and I know obviously with COVID onset. It, we had to adjust the budget during the fiscal year, we've done that a couple of times already during the current fiscal year. But how, I guess I would just want to see, see how satisfied is management with respect to what we, you know, finally budgeted to what the actual results are, and I also just wanted to note that I think the only reason we can even, you know, bring down that general fund deficit at all is I think a cost savings, basically, I think on the order of 2.725 million dollars. Versus what we budgeted, so, so kudos to the entire executive team and, and city staff for that. But I wanted to get a sense of, I guess, how, yeah, again, how maybe satisfied you are with the, how what our projections were by the end of the fiscal year? And some sense then of, of how accurate we, we think that they, they will be for the current fiscal year?
I'll make a comment, Councilmember Pooh, and then I'd love, Will, I'd love to hear your thoughts from an outsider who's stepping into it to see how we did. But I think we did pretty darn well consider on the revenue projections, considering that we were dealing with such a sudden and drastic change and no real information, and I think we all remember the, the sort of Pollyanna days when we thought we were going to be back open in April or May and we were going to be having things back to normal. So at the end, by the time we adjusted our budget, we ended up from the revenue side about 2% off of what our projections were. And so to me, that's pretty darn good considering what those could have been, those effects could have been. And then the fact, as you said, that the executive team worked so hard to keep us within our means. The unfortunate thing is, is that, you know, if, my mom used to say, if, if some butts were candies and nuts, what a wonderful world it would be. I, I say that if COVID hadn't happened, we would be in such a much better spot right now because of our fund balance, and so that's unfortunate that all of this happened for any number of reasons, not the least of which is the deaths and the sickness and everything else, but had it not been for all of that, we would have been in a, we would have been on the rebound much more than we, we already are, so it's unfortunate. But to answer your question, I think we did pretty darn well, given what we dealt with and 2% is a pretty good deviation factor. Will, what, what would you say to that?
I would just, I would just reiterate your Mark, your, your, your remarks, Mark. Mr. Lazaretto, you know, just at the, at the final budget and for the 1920, we had the revenues budgeted where we came in at at 98, 98% and had we maintained the expenditure level, we, we would have overspent for the year and been in a negative fund balance situation. So that kind of gave us the opportunity to adjust and get the expenditures down. And revenues kind of came in where we were projecting, we were able to hold off on the expenditures and, and get that positive change in fund balance.
Okay, great, yeah, again, thank you guys for all of that and because you know, I, although there's been a, a small amount of supplemental fund, I guess in the, in the current fiscal year with CDVG and CARES. You know, I feel like we definitely, we've actually delivered even more service on, on, on an actually leaner budget. So again, I think that that's a testament to the effort of the, the, the whole team and the organization.
Right, yeah, I also wanted to applaud the, the team for making substantial cuts in expenses, I think this is a remarkable year where we actually have revenues exceeding expenses, so kudos to the team for doing that, because I know, again, it was, everything happened so quickly, you had to pivot and you made those hard choices, so, so thank you to the team for that. Councilmember Dane, did you have a question?
Okay, yeah, the, okay, first of all, I, I like we have some, after we redo our budget, the project looks like it's, it's, it's better, still can reduce our deficit. Hopefully the next half year, we can get the more accurate information from the pandemic. Maybe it's, it's, if we still can reduce the, our deficit is better. But I, I, my question is, I interesting to discuss regarding the pension bond fund. So I, I want, because I don't have any, like I say, the idea is how can this kind of bond to save the, our future taxpayer money? So also help us to pay the, pay the pension, but also like how much, my question is how much the, the, the money we can save? So if we can do this kind of study, so also wanted to know, okay, not just to the, like maybe good, predict for the, for the, for the response, but also what's the negative things happen if just in case we cannot follow this kind of future for the bond, so I just want to advantage in the disseminated the, the analysis, so to help us to, for the future, if we, we, we needed this kind of bond or not, yeah, that's my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Dane, and we will bring back a full analysis to the council and the community when we have a discussion on the pension obligation bonds and we can talk about what the savings would be over the 30 year period of the bonds, how much we would save, and Vice Mayor Liu is right, that it sometimes saves you know, millions, if not tens of millions of dollars over that 30 year period, provided that everything comes to fruition as you plan. But in a nutshell, to answer your question, the pros of doing that, the, the, the positive side of doing a bond issuance is that if you borrow money at a low interest rate. Say 3% interest and we send all of that money up to PERS and they invest that money. And if they meet their return projection of 7%, that means that we are earning basically 4% on our money over and above what we're, we're paying for that. And so when we do that, that just in perpetuity pays down our obligation. So it works very well in an environment where they are able to invest and return more than we are paying for those costs. The downside is, is if they're not able to do that, then you still have to pay the bonds back with whatever funding source, in our case, it would be the retirement funds. And at the same time, PERS will send you a new bill for your, for your unfunded liability cost, your unfunded accrued liability. What we call UAL, and so you'll be paying your bonds plus whatever the additional UAL is. And so you have to have a backup plan for how to cover those costs should that occur. And so as an example, the city of Monrovia is a good city for us to look at because they have a retirement tax similar to what we do. And when they issued those bonds, they issued them with a plan that said if we have a new UAL that pops up in future years, we have to pay it off in a certain amount of time. And they have to plan for that, and so they have to decrease expenses or increase revenues elsewhere. And they've run into that situation, it's a small amount, but over the last couple of years, they've built up a, a UAL on top of what their bond funds are. But I'd be more than happy to present that to the council in a full deep dive with numbers at sometime in the next couple of months.
Okay, yeah, like you mentioned, Mark, so if we issue the bond, so the interest, it's a 30 years to fix it or the variable?
Fixed.
Fixed, okay, but these are good things for fixed, but, but like you say, if we got, didn't get a return more than maybe sit or near to the 7%, so that's meaning it's, 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 we're still lose money too, right? We'll have to, we have more obligation, it's for my understanding, right?
You're right, so anything more than 4%, if PERS earns anything more than 4%, again, using 3%, 3%. If we use that 3% number as an example of the interest rate that we would pay on the bonds. As long as PERS earns more than 3%, we will be okay. Better we would do, but if they earn less than, than 3%, we will be paying back our bonds, plus we'll be paying a new UAL cost on top of that. And then there's, there's And then there's, there's, I'm oversimplifying it, but between three percent and seven percent, we would still have to make some costs adjustments as well.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So hopefully you have some, for the future, have we have the, like, report, can take a look at. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the discussions, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Dane. Discussions will, is ongoing. This is just a snapshot for now. So if there's no other questions, we do need to take a vote and receive it. And finally, the annual report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Dane?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Liao?
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please. Item C, City of San Gabriel Legislative Platform. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Shapirian and Management Assistant Claudia Gellen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. At the direction of the City Manager, we are actually very excited this evening to introduce a draft of the city's legislative platform to you, to you for review. This has been a project that's been a long time coming, especially since City Council and staff get contacted regularly to take positions on various pieces of legislation. This is our attempt to consolidate the various issues and have an opportunity for a dialogue with all of you. Claudia Gellen has been the staff person that's worked diligently to pull all the pieces together with the help of an interdepartmental team that she'll discuss. And please keep in mind that this is a conversation starter. This list is, is inclusive of what we at a staff level have identified as priority issues based on previous discussions, industry standards, previous council direction on various items, comments we've heard in the past from the community. We are looking forward to a good discussion, discussion on this very important topic. And I'm going to turn it over to Claudia. She's going to go through a very detailed presentation with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Arminé. And for the record, again, this is Claudia Gellen, Management Assistant for the Economic Development Division. And as Arminé mentioned, we're very pleased to introduce the City of San Gabriel's first legislative platform for the year twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the legislative platform is to identify the city's position on priority issues. And by having this, it formalizes the city's position on legislation and provides clear direction by using the goals and objectives adopted by the San Gabriel City Council. The legislative, the legislative platform is driven by two key factors. More local control and more resources. By having this platform, City Council and staff have the opportunity to respond efficiently to new legislation and can use this guide to support, to support or oppose state and federal legislation authorized in Gabriel for the signature after City Council consideration. Next up, please. And I'm just going to take a quick moment to walk you through the process for how we plan to respond to legislative proposal. Once a, a determination is made that a legislative proposal may impact the city, staff will draft a letter outlining the city's position, supporting or opposing the issue for the mayor's signature. Second, if the mayor is unavailable, the city manager will then sign the position letter. Third, if a legislative issue is not addressed in the legislative platform, but impacts the city, staff will place the matter on the next City Council agenda for consideration. Fourth, the position letter will be sent to the bill's author. A copy of the final letter will be distributed to the City Council. Next slide, please. And as Arminé mentioned, an interdepartmental group representing various departments has been formed to monitor and be knowledgeable of legislative issues related to their discipline. legislative platform, priorities may only address issues directly relevant to or impact the provision of municipal service. Staff may not take positions on legislative issues without the city manager's office review and approval. Items not addressed in the legislative platform may be brought to the City Council for further direction. Next slide, please. To help maintain oversight of legislation, staff created an internal document to help us monitor relevant topic areas and make recommendations to the City Council as necessary. As you'll see in Attachment B, this spreadsheet is color-coded to help us track new legislation, legislation that is in committee, and to provide updates on the progress of implementation. Staff will bring items that require City Council direction or action before the council as needed. Next slide, please. And that, to conclude my, tonight, tonight's presentation, staff recommends that the City Council adopt the legislative platform that guides the city's support or opposition to state and federal legislation and authorize the staff to prepare position letters for legislation consistent with goals of the legislative platform to be signed by the mayor or the city manager after City Council consideration. And that is the end of my presentation. And at this time, Arminé and myself are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Does any council member have any factual questions for staff to clarify in the report? So let me proceed. The, I'll make the announcement. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No comments have been received on this item.
Okay, now I'll turn it back to council for deliberation or discussion. Is there any questions, clarification from any council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, I remember, CDS San Gabriel, we used to hire a consultant and who was lobbyists in Sacramento. And so I think every month he made a report, you know, what kind of a outstanding bills that is going to affect the local cities. And, but we, we discontinued his service, maybe six years ago. But I think this is a good, however, you know, the state of California, the state legislators produce seven thousand bills every year. So it's a lot, it's a lot to follow. But good thing is, you know, we have League of California Cities. They do show their opinions, you know, which bills they support, which bills they against it. And, and even in our local, we have the LA County Division. And we do meet once a month. So, yeah, well, they will present all the bills that currently introduced and which bills, you know, the, the League of California Cities will support. And so maybe we can work with them. And that'll be easier, because I, I think it's just a lot to cover. But also, you know, we talk about federal, that's even out of touch, you know, because remember, we talked about the small cells. And, yeah, we have five hundred, you know, all over from California, five hundred mayors and county supervisors. And we show ours, this approval of this small cell bill. And however, the telephone communication company, they, they, they just went directly to Congress. And I believe the Senator Tooney introduced the bill as S sixteen ninety-nine. And it is a string line citing for small cells deployment. It was passed in two thousand nineteen. So I, I, yeah, the League of California City has trouble with that, but I think there's a lawsuit. But anyway, we'll have to deal with that, because the city wants to have control of this small cells sites. You want to know where we want to put it. But, so that's another issue, you know, we involve with federal laws and and how much power we have. But, but basically, I think it's good. As a matter of fact, you know, we can all be educated and learn about what's going on in Sacramento, at least, you know, what kind of bills that they tried to pass. And remember, last year was SB fifty, they want a eight-story building near the transit and high density for affordable housing. And, you know, they, they will bring it back again, you know, and it's not for CDS San Gabriel, but it's for some other cities, they welcomed them. But for instance, there are two units in R one zone, I believe there will be a bill that coming. But right away, our neighboring city Roseme already adopted, you know, if the loss size is big enough, and it's all one zone, and they can build two units, two houses. So it, it's up to individual cities. And, and so, yeah, and another one, I think it's SB thirty-five by Senator, oh, what's his name, from San Francisco? And he's the one that, he wants string lining for all the development process. So, yeah, something that we can, you know, learn and, and we can see if this is applied to our city or not, you know, we can voice our opinions. And in the past, I think there's a proposition to, you know, forty-seven, forty-nine, and, and the City Council discussed it, we did not approve that, but then was passed. And this time, the last year was the Prop fifteen, you, you know, they want to just, I would say they ignored the Prop thirteen, but anyway, it would increase the property tax, but also Prop sixteen. And both didn't fail, even though we didn't discuss it in our sitting council. But sometimes, we can make our statements and say, hey, we're here to support or against, but in reality, maybe not, not we all can control, you know. And if, if, if it was a state legislators, they decide to go ahead with the bill. But then if, if the bill does not have a room for our own local control, and I don't think we can do too much, you know, for instance, the, the ADU was passed and, and it was good. And, but the, another one is the junior ADU also passed. And I don't know, we want that, you know, but doesn't matter, it, it's already passing in the bill. So that's something that we all can discuss. But, but I, I, yeah, basically, I approve this. I think this is a great thing for, for a city to get involved with the legislations. And it's just a lot, like I said, seven thousand, how are you going to follow all the seven thousand laws? So it's a little bit overwhelmed. But anyway, thank you so much. Thank you, the staff. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dane, you have your mic on?
Oh. Okay, all right.
Yeah, you, you don't have to say anything. I just know she had your mic on.
Okay, okay, I forgot. But it's fine. So, yeah. Yeah, I echo the Vice Mayor Liao talking about, yeah, it's a good, like, legislative platform to, I, I agree, like, a local control, but also, yeah, this good method, actually, even, even the, the staff would not bring out, it's our, our community, I sometimes, the people are talking about. So that's for the, like, maybe for the residents, they, they, they want to, like, know it's any bill from the state or federal, okay? Can let our local resident to know first, but I didn't think about the, really think about the city, for the city size, we can do something. But that, yeah, so I really appreciate, like, city staff to consider about it, to help our community. So, yeah, it's, yeah, I know, like, like, Vice Mayor say, have seven thousand bill in the state, okay? But at least we can do, if staff can do something, it's really affect our local community. So can bring to us to discuss, so we can have some statement to, to let, like, our, our local elect register or, or Sacramento or even, even Washington DC, right? Okay. Yeah, by the way, I saw that just, just for the state and, 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 and the federal, right? How about the, I don't know, how about the county too? Sometimes the county, the legislature, maybe it's county legislature, I think is a more effective to us, our local city. So we, if we can, like, help, the, the staff can help us to watch out. Yeah, it's, it's a really good things, I think, if we can, we can start it, I, that even our, our city community allow members will be like it, that, okay, we can bring up, like, some bill. It's really not the good, or really not the, our, our community want it, I, we, we need to let the state or federal legislature know ASAP, okay, to help us, also help them to make a decision. I don't, we don't want to, like, pass the bill, then, oh, that's not good for our city, right? At least we can give it to some suggestion. And by the way, also, if I think, maybe just for the hour, if, if we find something, not just for our, our San Gabriel city, maybe it's a small city, it's not enough. If we can talk about neighborhood city, hey, maybe these things, it's not just for our San Gabriel city, but also maybe effective for my, our neighborhood city, Temple City, Roseme or Hambra. So maybe we can help the communicate with the neighborhood city council, so we may, we hope so, everything to do the right, actually want to do the right things for our local community. Thank you, Mayor. That's my.
Councilmember Pooh?
Councilmember Dane, yeah, if I just may, I think you did bring up a great point. That's a great suggestion. If the platform is adopted tonight, what we can do is we can share this document with our legislators and also provide it to the League of California Cities as well. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pooh?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So looking through the list of bills that is attached to the platform, I mean, I, I think the sort of general description and each of the subject areas, if you will, is good. Obviously, we, we support more local control and we support more funding to, to deal with all the things that we need to deal with. And the list of bills looks pretty good, too, many of which are already enacted. One suggestion, though, is if you could re, resend to us this, the the list of bills with a different color for the bills that are in committee, because that, that navy blue makes it very difficult to read. The list of bills with a different color for the bills that are in committee, because that 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 navy blue makes it very difficult to read. So I couldn't quite see all of those, all those details. So I don't, I don't have any, I don't think I have any particular. You know, comments on these, of course, you know, we could always revisit them and and. And amend this list in the future or expand upon it, I mean, it's obviously. Going to always be a work in progress with the seven thousand or so bills per year that, you know, are discussed in in Sacramento. And to Councilmember Ding's point, the, you know, each of the other sort of. More regional. Joint Powers Authorities do have legislative platforms similar to this, and so. I guess I wanted to ask and see if how, to what extent that our working group had coordinated with the with the cog. On the COGS legislative priorities and 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 actually all of the COG committees just adopted our legislative priorities for the year. Not all, I mean, those are also works in progress, too, because we don't always know what's coming down the pipeline at the beginning of the year, but. I just want to see to what extent there was some comparison between these, these specific, are are these specific bills versus, you know, what the what the cog is. Looking at, because there are a lot of housing related bills, because there's a lot of housing related discussion in Sacramento right now. And I think that that's true at the cog level, too, but first just want to see, you know, how. How much, how consistent they are.
Councilmember who I can chime in, we actually, because we had an interdepartmental team of staff from almost every department. We all looked at the various bills, both through the League of California Cities, through the cog. In addition, because we all have very specific industry organizations that were members of. We also took advantage and looked at all of those organizations, because there are some specific bills, for example. The American Planning Association will track specific goals related to housing development density. Just the same way that a lot of the economic development organizations will track legislation. Same way the public works associations, the different safety organizations, and we're fortunate to have staff members in our in our organization. That have leadership role in certain groups, so we were able to not only pull from looking at the league. We initially reached out to the league, then looked at all the materials that the cog had posted. And then looked at all of our individual industry groups. And I think our goal is to continue doing that, because I think what you what you mentioned is imperative, it's important that we're consistent with our. Local legislative groups, in addition that we continue informing the representatives of our legislators, so they're aware. Of the bills that are important to us and we're tracking them, I think this was our way of getting something in front of council and getting a process. Bless, so that moving forward, we are all working a lot more collaboratively together, so that. There's been instances, I think, in recent years where all council members, staff members, we've all gotten letters from different organizations. Asking for us to support or oppose bills, but we haven't had a mechanism for going through those pieces of legislation. I think this creates some sort of a mechanism, and to your point, I think it's important that we continue working very closely with the cog. The cog has a great pulse on a lot of the legislation that affects us in the region. Just the same way, I think we have several members of our council who are actively involved with the league. I think this would be a good way to get that information back to the city, and we certainly encourage all of you, because you all do have different. Leadership roles with different organizations, if things are brought to your attention. We sincerely ask that you bring us in the loop, because then we can add it to our tracking mechanism. And if we need to write specific letters, bring that forward to all of you to review at future council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, so I guess the answer is that it it does track a lot of what the league and the cog have already set forth as legislative priorities.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Then as as a matter of process, then, so. And I could also imagine situations where where you are individually as a city asked to, you know. Sign a letter, but we could also be asked to sign on to a letter that's already being done by the league or maybe SCAG or the cog. So I I guess I just don't want to, I don't want to create a situation where we're we are sort of duplicating a lot of efforts. So in those situations where there's already advocacy happening through a larger. Subregional or regional entity. I I guess I'm I'm curious, that is the intent of staff that we would still have our own advocacy letter, even though. There might already be, you know, efforts going on at through various other agencies.
I think I'm going to give you a yes and no answer, I think it depends. I think it depends on the legislation and what position is being taken. Our goal would be that with organizations that we are a member of. If they are taking a position and they're asking local cities to sign on to. Ultimately, our goal would be to sign on to it and inform the entire council. I think if there's a situation where there might be some uncertainty whether or not we want to do that. I think either way, those would be things we would bring back to council and provide, have council provide us with clear direction on. Whether or not we sign on, whether or not we need to do something separate, so a good example would be a lot of the issues we've dealt with recently with Lena. There have been various organizations that have written letters opposing the numbers. But in addition to that, we as a city have separately written a letter where we appealed. And we wrote a separate letter explaining kind of our position, so that's an example of, we may sign on to the much larger regional. Letter that's written on behalf of multiple cities, then separately, we also submit our own position letter that explains the specifics. As it pertains to our organization in our community.
That's a good answer, I think. Let's see here. So is then, is it also the intent of this that for everything that's in this platform currently that. There's sort of almost like preauthorized to have a position letter, I I I think process wise, each letter. Would. Still come before council before being beforeing approved, is that correct?
I was I was going to give Claudia a chance to answer if you wanted to.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I'm kind of having.
Claudia, you you've actually muted yourself again.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Armani. Um, the process would be that we would bring the. The letter before council prior to the mayor or the city manager signing off on the position letter, that is correct.
Okay, all right, then, in that case, I can think of perhaps. One other item to add to the list, since we do talk about some federal. Federal things here, CARES Act, CDBG funding, let's see, there's, I don't even know what the number is of the. Potential bill, but the, you know, the Relief Act, I think it's called the American. Rescue Act or something along those lines that's being discussed now, I think to the extent that it includes funding. Lost revenues for state and local governments, that's something that would be actually, obviously, you know, high interest to us. As we do have the net, the review of the current fiscal year, a review, our revenues, excuse me. And comparison to of actual results to what we projected at the beginning of the year. You know, any, any help, obviously, is is going to be, is going to be helpful for for us, and so. That's something that I think it's almost, you know, like, like many other things, if if we can get more funding. Especially funding to replace some of the revenues that are lost due to the pandemic, then. That's obviously a good thing for the city and will help us to be able to maintain service levels, maintain employees. So forth and so on, and, you know, only expedite our our pathway towards. You know, reducing the general fund deficit and and being in a better place in terms of that kind of long term fiscal sustainability. But if any of my colleagues on the council disagree, then I think, you know, then or or agree, then we could. You know, perhaps add that item to the list as well.
Yeah, Councilman Boo, I do agree, you know, because the CARES Act, there are some restrictions. For small cities funding, but not for the cities over five hundred thousand population. So there's a coalition, I joined a coalition, and just a small group of the cities represented. In front of the county supervisor's office, yeah, because county receive over a billion dollars. From CARES Act and like St. Gabriel, just a hundred some thousand dollars, so this is, you know, really. Not enough, you know, because even small cities like St. Gabriel, we do need help. So I think that's something for the next funding. And I hope they can remove that restriction of five hundred thousand population. And and we have to work with. Me out call, and not just cock, but, you know, many different cocks in Southern California. We can call, you know, call the another coalition for fear. Care funding and that will be perfect, I actually, I did talk to League of California Cities for that. Purpose, too, so even the whole California can. You know, stand up and representing the small cities and say, hey, we need more funding. So that's just something that we all can work together. Another issue, actually, I'm facing another issue right now, is the. The COVID nineteen. You know, this. I I don't know how to say it. You know, the LA County has announced that, well, he has the state governor announced that, you know. For age sixty five or over, they can have the vaccines right away. But LA County is moving very slowly, even up till today, try to lock into that and still. It's almost impossible, I left five messages with their telephone number and never received phone call back. So I'm suggesting, you know, because we have to work with the county. If the county can spare some of their works and to our city, for instance. We're talking about the Harold Community Clinic or some other private clinic. As long as they have doctors on site and they can also administer this vaccination. So this is something that we should work together in LA County, ADA cities should get together. And ask for County Health Department, hey, give us some of the your work. And we can all, you know, move this process smoothly and fast, so this is something that. That I've been thinking about it, and because it's just that, you know, every day we had saw the numbers, we had many people die. And this is not the, not the, you know, good thing to see, so. As long as we can step up and help, I and that's something I I I'm willing to take on, you know. But I I I don't know, this platform, going to get involved with the county issues, but. I think Councilmember Dean made the very good point, you know, we're belong to the. Where we under LA County, so we're very, we're closely related, so we have to pay attention to whatever we're doing. So this is something. You know, instead of just tackle all the state legislations, maybe we pay attention. The counties. You know, needs and another issue is the homeless housing, too, so. Yeah, so maybe, maybe, you know, we have time, maybe we all include all this. You know, not just the state, but the county and 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 federal, if if we have the. Resources to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, you know, this is a work in progress, this is the first time that's been brought to us, so. I know there there's a lot that needs to still take place with the framework, but I do appreciate that staff has brought it forward. I appreciate that, you know, we recognize we can't live in a bubble, we need to start working with other agencies. You know, whether it's state, federal, LA County, all the regional groups that we're involved with. These are all valuable advocacy groups and we need each other to to get through these really difficult times. I I was just going to suggest a couple of things, one is because we are still in COVID and we will be here for a while. Maybe it would make sense to put COVID in a whole different section, as opposed to putting it in a different pot. Because it's all related, you know, whether it's business or businesses or homelessness or. Housing relief, it's all related, so it might be good to have one, one person or one department. In charge of all COVID related issues that starts to continue to be. A developer, whether it's, you know, the American Rescue Relief or LA County continues to try to help. In many ways to fill the gaps, but I just think it would be helpful to have a COVID. Group as opposed to sprinkling in 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 different departments. And then second is, as this framework continues to be used, maybe in the next six months, maybe bring it back to council. Let us know how it's working, what did you find out, and even what can council do to help with this. This platform, but I think it's it's, I applaud staff for doing this, it's. It's so important for us to be there at the pulse and understanding. And 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 to advocate for for what's important for us, especially, you know, local issues, this is the way to do it. So with that, I am just going to move to adopt the legislative.
To ask a few questions, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Councilmember Harrington.
Thanks, Mayor. Claudia, I was a little confused as to the process. Because the way I read it, maybe I'm reading too closely on page three of the of the package attachment A. It says in item one that the. The the letter will be drafted for mayor's signature, if the mayor's, and item two says that the mayor's on availability manager will sign the letter. And then it three says, if the legislation is not addressed, then it'll put, be put on council for consideration. I think we should move the, we draft a premier signature until after council consideration, so that. It's very clear that none of these go directly, if they're okay inside of the policy, they go direct to the mayor. And then we should have some sort of, I don't know if I want to call it urgency, or, you know, sometimes things happen between meetings where. They really do need. Quick and careful consideration, so maybe if it's very important to the city, we might want to have. A legislative briefing memo go out and then have the council decide whether to convene a meeting for that or not, a special meeting. That's happened one or two times since I've been here, not very frequent, but it's nice to have it in the policy rather than be scrambling, how do we take care of this? And then just as a comment, I think, you know, the staff has done a good job as far as trying to capture a lot of the categories. And I agree with the comments of my fellow council members, but there are a lot of areas where. It can literally be taken two ways, and so that's why I think it does need to, you need to ensure that it comes in front of council. For example, if you go to fiscal responsibility, that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. The second bullet says, support legislation that strengthens and expands ongoing revenue for the city. You could also say, hey, if it raises taxes, that's ongoing revenue for the the city, we're being fiscally responsible by raising taxes. So that's why I want to be very careful that staff doesn't just say, oh, it it checks bullet two, here's our position on it. That's why I think for the council really needs to come before all of us, we all, you know, can can deliberate. We all can have input and then decide whether to vote yes or no, I, you know, I I like that letter, I don't like that, I like that bill, I don't like that bill. So I just want to make sure that, like Mayor Munchakka said, is that we come back and visit some of these, after it's been in. In the works for a bit, we see how it's working out and then probably tinker with some of these, but I like the idea. But I like the idea of of the policy in the first place of the platform. For the longest time I was asking for this, probably for two years, and then it just never happened long before you were here, Mark. But where we would actually have a stated platform. And then it'd be easy for staff to digest and and say, yes, that new bill looks like it fits our platform or does not. And then we could actually take more of an advocacy role independently. And and we kind of lost that momentum when we stopped using the consultant that council member allow was discussing. So I think this is more of a council collaboration staff role of that. Because I think we're all able to know what's good for our city. Staff has the expertise to analyze it, council has the, you know, responsibility for policy. So I think between those two factors, we should be able to put out. A pretty good product in the end, so I I like I I'm generally supportive of the process, but it's only to clarify. Thank you.
Was there any response? Or was that clear, the staff?
I think we got some really good comments and I think what we'll do is. Pending the action by council, we can make adjustments as necessary. I do think that the suggestion to have a COVID category separately is a really good suggestion, especially now. And certainly, I think having categories, bringing items back. And I think all of you gave us some really good feedback that we were hoping you would give us. And I think we have enough pending council action this evening to make necessary adjustments. And certainly bring it back in a few months, once we put this to use. And again, as I mentioned earlier, encourage all of the council members as you're being approached for support or opposition. That we we kind of get into the flow of it together. I think I've heard from two council members that we used to have a consultant who did some of this. I think that's actually before most of our time with the organization. So this is going to be something new for us take that we're going to take on. And we certainly look forward to that collaborative spirit with council to move this process along and come back in a few months with a report on how we're doing.
Great. Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Dean.
Yeah, okay, I I like to add on a COVID nineteen and but this one, I think maybe. Vice Lao, Vice Mayor Lao, it's mentioned for actually the for the COVID nineteen with the county, the issue. It's more reasonable issue, maybe we we I we hope it's we can do the like more time whiles. Okay, so we need to maybe respond more quickly. So first of all, like, like, I agree, I not just for the CDBG fund for our small city. I think they should be given to us more money for our small city, not just the. There's some portion, actually, actually, for the for the percentage age, they should be higher than the bigger city. Biggest city, they have enough fun, right? But our small cities is less fun, they should be got the more. And and another thing is for the COVID ninety vaccine, so I don't know. So so but these are questions of for the vaccine, who distributed? It's a it's a state distribute to the county only or county? What's the procedure? I just, I I want the the staff maybe can ask King the 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 county about that, how they distribute the vaccine. My if my saw, if county, if if vaccine get give to county, county should, it's good things for them. It's just distributed to the eighty city, right?
Respectfully, Councilmember Dean, I think we're getting off the agenda. We're really talking about legislation, the policy, not various topics.
Okay. All right.
You you can have that conversation tomorrow.
Okay.
But Mark, he he's well versed now.
Understanding, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I, you know, I would actually caution against putting the county stuff on onto this legislative platform. It would dilute the sort of purpose of it because there is we're caught. And I know that Mark and the rest of the team is already. Constantly dealing with the county just about, you know, every day, every almost every hour of every day. And this, this in my mind is meant to be, you know, more for what's happening at the state and state and federal levels. Because especially during COVID, things that are ongoing with the county is is that that that's like, you know. That's that's almost, it's almost, it's a given and and I know that the those bases are being covered. You know, and if you also included county, then you'd also have to put in metro, you'd have to put in many other agencies, AQMD, probably other things. So in other words, I think that I think that the for the purpose and intent of what this platform is supposed to be. I do like the idea in a way as was mentioned. It helps take in house the things that used to be, you know, sort of under the purview of of a consultant. But honestly, I I never saw the the real benefit of that consultant, of having that consultant. He would produce a report, but didn't really. Produce any results for for us, for the city. And this way, I think, you know, we can stay focused on a few things, some of the things that are most important to us. And and I wouldn't expect it to be like every meeting or, you know. But basically, when when there's significant movement, maybe on a major policy. In 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 these areas or on these specific bills, then I think that that would be an appropriate time, you know. Potentially for a letter to be brought back to the council for approval. And I do like the suggestion also from Councilmember Harrington that if there is some emergency, kind of like a need arose basis. For an advocacy letter that there should be a process for that too somehow. Sounds because oftentimes there are deadlines for for those kinds of advocacy letters. And then that if we don't want to miss out on it, we won't, we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to take a look at it as a council as a whole. But if it were squarely within what we've already expressed as part of, you know, what's in the best interest of the city. I wouldn't see a problem with that kind of thing, you know, going out and then being ratified, you know, later on at the at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Because that that kind of thing does happen, it's very, it's very rare, maybe once, not even once a year, I would say. But accounting for a process for that, I think is 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 important.
Jason, one second right there, would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely.
Question for Keith, and I don't know if it it fulfills the Brown Act or not, but I was imagining something just like that. So for example, if everything falls within policy and staff would like to draft a letter. They could do so. And then if no like distribute it to the council and if we didn't ask for a meeting, it's going out. So we're not actively voting on anything, we're passively just letting staff send the letter with the mayor's signature on it. And so if no if the three council members don't say, hey, we want a meeting, it just goes out. But it's it's passed through, like it's emailed to the council first. With an opportunity.
Yeah, that that's probably okay. The way I would look at it as this, you know, it, for example, the staff has to be able to ask. The board if it's necessary to have a special meeting sometimes, right? So so I would look at this rather than developing a consensus on a policy. I I I think the example you're using is where. The policy has already been determined, the the general manager, the city manager has authority to send out a letter presumably. He wants to just let you know that this is what's going out. And if somebody wants to call for a special meeting, you can do that, I think that's probably okay.
Okay, yeah, because that's like, I think something along those lines would guide staff and then we can ratify that policy later if we have to. It doesn't have to be done to 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 vote on this tonight, but if we could develop something like that, I think it'd be a good line of. Just so we can act quickly and swiftly because it's within our policy, everyone agrees on that.
Since it's it's sort of brushing up against a serial spoken spoken spoke and hub meeting, let me. Let's let's make sure we get the the fine details on that down, but I think broadly speaking, that something like that could be done.
Perfect, thanks, Jason.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for the suggestion. And I think that given these sort of finer details and the and the need for maybe a little bit more legal analysis. I I don't think we, I think we've all expressed the support for having a legislative platform in general. But then sort of adding that process for some of those types of situations. I think also clarifying that, you know, in the normal circumstances, it would come before council before going out and being signed. And adding the COVID section and the specifically the American Rescue Plan. Specifically as it relates to aid for local governments. I would propose that we then have it just bring brought back at the next council meeting instead of. Authorizing or approving it at this point with all the these, you know, changes in a sort of more of a vague form. So we can actually look at the language.
Okay.
And maybe if it comes back on, we can do it on consent.
Yes, absolutely, I think, I mean, I would expect it to be on on next, the next agenda's consent calendar. And if there are any, you know, comments or changes to to the language, we can, any of us can obviously, you know, pull it from consent and and make those. You know, suggestions at that point in time.
So I think we're all in agreement with that suggestion. So there's no further comments, let's get to the next item.
Item D Dial Ride Service Request for Proposal and Approval of Professional Services Agreement. Presentation will be made by Community Services and Intermission Playhouse Director Perez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight for your review and approval is the proposed agreement for our dial ride service. With tonight's report, staff will provide information about our dial ride program, availability of Proposition A funds, which cover the cost of this program. And the terms of the proposed professional services agreement with First Transit. Also provided in your staff report was a customer survey completed in twenty eighteen. Ridership data from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty and transit program information from neighboring cities. I will not be covering these items tonight, but did want to include them as information in your report. Slide two, please. Or slide one, thank you. St. Gabriel's Dial Ride Service is available for city residents aged sixty two and over and individuals with disabilities. The program operates year round, seven days per week from seven AM to seven PM. Transportation is available within the city and up to five miles outside the city limits at a rate of fifty cents per one way ride. The fees collected to the fare box are deducted from the city's invoice each month. Three types of service are available, including subscription, which is for regular riders such a regular ride such as rides to the senior lunch program. Advanced reservation, which allows participants to arrange for rides up to one week in advance. And demand response, which allows participants to request same day transportation for medical equipment. Slide two, please. In November twenty twelve, the city entered into an agreement with First Transit for the operation of our dial ride program. In twenty seventeen, the city renewed the contract with First Transit. First Transit owns, operates and maintains four cutaway vans for St. Gabriel's program. Three are in service and one is a backup. First Transit also provides all program services and employs all program staff, including dispatchers, drivers and maintenance staff. Community Services publicizes the program, accepts applications for new riders, monitors ridership and reports any issues to First Transit. Slide three, please. This program is funded through Proposition A Local Return Funds with a program budget of currently three hundred and fifty seven thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty one. The city receives over eight hundred and fifty thousand annually in Prop A funds and has typically spent half approximately half of the allotment on the dial ride program. Administrative costs within city staff and bus shelter maintenance. Remaining funds are exchanged every other year at a reduced rate for general fund dollars. Slide four, please. Staff issued a request for proposal or RFP in October twenty twenty for the dial ride program. The RFP requested a term of one year and a total of five new vehicles. City received, the city received one proposal from First Transit at five hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy thousand. Seven hundred, five hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. In order to reduce the annual cost, staff discussed the terms of the agreement with First Transit. First Transit provided options to increase the length of the term to three years and decrease the number of vehicles to match our current fleet. Slide five, please. Staff selected option four, which includes two new mini vans, one new cutaway and maintains a current cutaway as a backup vehicle. All vehicles are capable of transporting a wheelchair passenger. The cost of this auction is four hundred and eighty six thousand, four hundred and thirty four, thirty seven dollars for the first year with an increase as shown. For the next two years. The agreement is also renewable for two one year terms. This is to be funded by Prop A. Slide six, please. In reviewing the twenty eighteen survey and ridership data, states the staff included various goals as part of the RFP. Staff will work with First Transit to monitor the number of first choice appointments provided, number of riders per revenue hour. On time performance for pickups, reduction of customer cancellations and reduction of customer no shows. Monitoring these areas will help ensure the most efficient service and high customer satisfaction. And slide seven, please. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council approve the three year contract with First Transit effective February first, twenty twenty one. And authorize the city manager to execute the document. This concludes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions. And also on the call with us this evening, we have several members of the First Transit team or if there are any more technical questions that they might better respond to.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report?
Just wanted to understand who 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 gets to set the fair?
Interesting question, hadn't hadn't thought of that. We, the city set the fair, I believe. And First Transit, I think you could address that if if that's different than what I'm indicating. But that fair has, to be honest, been in place since I've been with the city for about twenty years, so.
Yeah, this is David Smith with First Transit, that's correct, the city sets the fair.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lau.
But it's the fifty cent per ride, it's current charges for the dial ride.
Exactly, fifty cents per one way ride.
So what's the annual revenue for our dial ride, do you know?
I apologize, I do not have that figure in front of me. I don't know if that's something that finance might be able to address or if that we would need to get back to you with that information.
Thank you.
Assuming everyone pays, it's about five thousand dollars.
I fear city manager looking at it.
Well.
Based on the ridership.
Yeah, based on twenty nineteen ridership, but. But we don't see that revenue, so it's just it's, you know, it's deducted from our bill. So I think that's where it's maybe a little bit of a black box or difficult for us to confirm.
That that's correct, so we see that on on the individual invoices, but you're correct, that we don't see that as actual revenue.
There any other questions? Okay, so at this time, I'll make the announcement, the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Mayor, no comments have been received for this item.
Okay, so let's continue on with council deliberation and discussion. Were there any other questions? Councilmember Pooh.
So thank you, Mayor. So looking over all the materials here. You know, I I continue to be a bit shocked by the price tag for these services. I don't, I don't disagree that I think we all want to make sure that we continue to provide this service for. continue to provide this service for our senior and disabled members of the community. But just based on the twenty-nine, and I only go on twenty nineteen numbers since twenty twenty with onset of COVID, of course, that makes it an outlier in terms of data. But, you know, just based upon the current price of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars per year, you know, nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three rides total means that we spent basically thirty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents per ride. To me, that sounds, that's a kind of, that's kind of high, based on the or I'm sorry, it's thirty-eight dollars and five cents per ride. And based on four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year, it'd be fifty-one dollars and eighty-four cents per ride. So to me, it feels like there should be a better solution. I appreciate that, and I and I I appreciate that the data here is broken out by, you know, how many of these rides are disabled, how many are blind. And and I think that those categories, even if you include the aids that might, you know, accompany some of the those types of riders. Those individuals are the type that do need special assistance. And I think that obviously the the type of vehicle that can accommodate those who are in a wheelchair or so forth is obviously appropriate. But if you add all those up, that's only one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six out of the nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. So and that is, and that number is eighteen point three nine percent of the total. So my idea or my suggestion here is that somehow or another, that I think that it's appropriate to contract. And, you know, I don't have the problem to pay extra so that we can make sure that those individuals who really need the extra service are able to get it. But that then, you know, for the rest of the, you know, the ridership population, you know, looking at a different type of model, maybe that we have a hybrid model between that of our traditional dial-a-ride and what Monrovia does, which is subsidizing Lyft rides for for those who, they don't need a special vehicle, they don't really need special assistance. But then, that kind of a model, I believe, would would yield a lower cost, which even though these are Prop A funds, those Prop A funds could then, you know, Prop A funds that are saved could then be used either, you know, for for other Prop A purposes or even in exchange for for general fund dollars. So I've always had a like, an issue with what the the high cost of this contract and the fact that it's even being increased even more by thirty-three percent and escalating from there to me is a very difficult pill to swallow, especially at a time when we're looking at all all these budgetary concerns and and revenues that are sort of, you know, severely impacted by COVID. So those are my thoughts and suggestions. I don't know if, you know, I'm obviously not discussed this with anybody else. Certainly not even other members of the staff, but but I I don't feel like this is, this doesn't feel like it's going in a good direction, where basically the cost is going to continue to escalate. And, you know, our cost per ride was going to exceed fifty dollars per ride. It's it's, you know, it's not, it's not a sustainable model.
Think, I I can address a couple of those comments. Thank you, Councilmember Pu, for for your comments on that. I I think a couple of things that we that that would be worth the council looking at are that though the clientele on here may not be listed as as blind or needing an aide, we are continually reminded from our seniors that they they do have a need to have that that ride. Either they are not not able to to use a a computer or don't have a phone that they can can contact Lyft or or an Uber-type ride. So that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. We also have the the seniors who just do need that that additional assistance. And so I think it's it's important to look at that. We also included in the report what those, how those Prop A funds can be spent, and they really do have limited use. And they are essentially being used for the programs at this point, with the exception of, as we mentioned in the report, with the exception of a fixed route, which I know is something that the council has looked at or has has not looked at, has discussed previously as an option that we would like to see in our city. And I I think that's something that we can definitely look at down the road. But I don't think, based on the rides that we're seeing and based on the needs that seniors have in our community, I I don't believe that that fixed route would indeed accommodate their needs or would would, for example, replace their needs.
No, I I I agree that the dial-a-ride and a fixed route service are two separate things, serving to, you know, potentially two different populations. But I and I recognize that not all seniors would be able to, you know, use Lyft or or Uber the way that, you know, other other consumers do. But somehow or another, I think we could solve for that, right? I mean, there there would need to be, I mean, if it's just even a a person that actually answers the phone and and then, you know, gets the, you know, gets the ride for them. Some of these, as you mentioned, there's three, there's three models. There's one that's a subscription model. That's just, I assume that that's based on a, you know, a regular trip that that person makes. So that one is actually, doesn't even, doesn't really need to be ordered each time. But I still don't think that, like, you know, the sort of the so so obviously, I I I agree that we need to serve all those individuals. But the cost that we're talking about here, to me, is exorbitant and is only increasing. We need to figure out a more innovative and different solution. I mean, I'll notice that I did underline all of those Prop A uses that you are referring to. And I will say, I mean, there's actually, you know, quite a fair number. Park-and-ride lots is one of them, and we have a number of those, a couple of those in the city. You know, uh, let's see here. So fixed route service, paratransit service, recreational transit service, bus stop improvements and maintenance. I think we have used it on on bus stops before. Public transit capital, transportation systems management, transit security, fare subsidy, transportation planning, transit marketing systems, park-and-ride lots, as I mentioned. You know, I actually think that if we were also looking at this from the perspective of the Mission District revitalization plan that we are still trying to move forward, that if we were able to convert that park-and-ride lot in the Mission District to more of a transit hub, that would also, you know, bring more people to the Mission District. The four-eighty-seven bus route does stop there, goes and then goes from there to downtown. If there were other, if we were, you know, essentially located within the city, and if we were able to, you know, utilize it better, because it's currently very underutilized, then I think that that we'd have multiple benefits there. And Prop A funds, I think, you know, hopefully, you know, would be one component to how we could fund things like that. That's why I'm saying that, you know, even though this, it's Prop A funds that are limited in in their use, being able to save Prop A funds is still a benefit to the city as we can utilize them for other services or in other ways. And again, it's it's also comes down to just the cost issue, which is this contract just keeps going up, up and up and up, and then I don't, you know, I'm not sure where does it stop? After the third year, where does it go? You know? That's part of it that I feel like is unsustainable. And then, you know, and if we are able to come up with a better solution that somehow does provide the service that's needed for those who are who are most in need. Again, I am not questioning that at all. But then also able to deliver the service in a cost-effective manner. That's, those are the sort of areas where I feel like there's room for improvement.
Rebecca, if you don't mind, I just want to point out one thing, and thank you, Councilmember Pu, for the question. I think it comes down to a question of policy for the council to decide. I don't think you're wrong. I think we could reduce our costs if we did a hybrid program with a Lyft for part of those or Uber for part of those trips. And then a dial-a-ride for others. There have been cities like Monrovia in our backyard that have done that, and they have achieved a significant cost savings. But I think the policy decision for the council to decide is what's going to be more important for our city, saving measure R or measure M dollars for street projects? Or until we get to the point where we have a transit hub in our city, we we can't use other than for the dial-a-ride, we can't use measure A funds for for those dial-a-ride, I'm sorry, for those Uber or Lyft-type services. So we'd have to have that first mile, last mile program in order to use the the measure A funds. We could absolutely do right now the kind of program you're talking about, using measure R or measure M funds. And ultimately, we would save taxpayer dollars, and we would, it would be a lower cost. But it would be a funding source that we have in the past chosen as more valuable for street projects and paving projects rather than for those services.
But I'll note that the staff report says that the reason Monrovia's program is eligible for Prop A funds is because it does provide those first mile, last mile solutions. And frankly, the, I looked it up on Google Maps, the Gold Line Station in South Pasadena is three point eight miles away from from where I am, so it's within the five-mile radius of where, you know, our current service goes. As long as those rides were available to that transit center, then wouldn't it also qualify in the same way that Monrovia's program does? Not to mention, of course, obviously, you know, other you know, bus stops and other transit stops that are within the five-mile radius.
I think we would have to be able to show that enough trips are generated from South Pasadena's Light Rail Station, and those trips have a nexus to that first mile, last mile, which is what Monrovia is able to to show. If we were able to show what you're envisioning, which is that our our Mission Park-and-Ride Lot, our Mission District Park-and-Ride Lot could somehow be a transit hub, I think then we would be able to have a different conversation. But as of today, when Metro is looking at how we spend our funds, they have determined we can't use the measure A or Prop A to be funds for that.
I'd like to, you know, hear what the other other council members' thoughts are.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question. Why such a big increase, you know, from three hundred and fifty-seven thousand to four hundred and eighty-six? So that's hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And that's thirty-six percent increase. I just, my guess, maybe because the minimum wages or the health insurance increase? Do you know anything, why is such a big increase?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Liao. I know that First Transit has mentioned the minimum wage increase, but actually, I'm going to turn it over to them, as they will have potentially more specific information on that, on the cost increase.
Great, thank you. This is David Smed with First Transit. I appreciate being here. A lot of the increases, as you noted, are heavily associated with wages. The rates currently were created, I'm going to say, five years ago, prior to the minimum wage scale increases. So we have actually been internally subsidizing the increases over the last couple of years above what is being paid. In addition, we're looking at some newer vehicles as opposed to fully depreciated vehicles. And that obviously includes a capital cost. And of course, all the economic benefits, as we all know, have gone up significantly with higher wages, people are, more people pay benefits. So, you know, this is still a very highly leveraged operation. I do know the price tag is very steep, but on a small operation, unfortunately, the costs are not burdened over a large number of trips, and therefore, the per trip or per hour cost was more expensive.
Thank you. I think you're breaking up, but anyway, I can understand what are you talking about? But however, you know, during the COVID nineteen, the ridership dropped more than forty-five percent. So, you know, less rides and less operational cost. So I was wondering why you used to keep that, you know, projected increase for for San Gabriel?
So, no one expects COVID riders to stay the same moving forward. People start riding again, the vehicles need to be there. But we also have to be real spacious, and so while there may be less riders, there's still the same number of vehicles out on the road, because they're only taking one person at a time for safe social distancing. So there aren't some given dates with the COVID aspect with drivers and vehicles still on the road.
Dave, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing. Did that answer your question, Vice Mayor, or were you able to hear that?
No, I was just guessing what he's saying. One more question is, you know, some of those paratransit provider, they have a combination of the vans and also they will issue vouchers for taxi rights, okay? Because a lot of these disableds and seniors, they don't know how to use Uber or Lyft. So they use taxi rights, and as I understand, that's allowable to use Prop A funding. Does anybody know about that?
I I can address from one angle. I know Vice Mayor Liao, that the, our senior services contracts that we had with Santa Anita Family Service, they used to be able to provide taxi vouchers. And then they are no longer, first off, we no longer have them immediately in our city, but they were no longer able to provide those. But that could be something that we look in from that angle. I'm not sure if that's an option that First Transit has or not.
Yeah, I think they, First Transit and other transit, you know, San Gabriel Transit, that's another question. Did we reach out to San Gabriel Transit? No, not at all. They didn't reply to our RFP?
The one proposal that we received was from First Transit. I I'm not familiar with San Gabriel Transit.
Okay, San Gabriel, also, they own taxi cabs company, pretty much every taxi cabs company. So they they can issue, you know, vouchers for 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 those rides. But, you know, we talked about this First Transit maybe back in, I don't know, four or five years ago already. And because there are a lot of riders are very angry with their services. And so they look out to the provider in Temple City. And we found out that was the Southland. And they just kept talking about it, hey, we should switch to Southland. And looks like Southland also have some interest in our RFP, but then, at the end, they dropped out. So do you know anything about that, why they decided not to continue with the proposal?
So we included that in the in the report, as well as we did include survey of neighboring cities and what what services, service providers they use. We did have a question, some clarifying questions from Southland early on with with regard to the proposal, and so actually fully anticipated that they would be submitting a proposal. And in the end, they did not submit a proposal, so I followed up with them just to see what the reason was behind that. And they indicated that with the kind of uncertainty, if you will, with with COVID at this time, they were not prepared to submit a proposal or were not inclined to submit a proposal. And they also indicated that they they could not, they did not believe that they could be competitive price-wise with our current provider.
Well, but, you know, I was looking at the our comparison with other neighboring cities dial-a-ride service. Looking at the Temple City and of course, serve by Southland. And overall, comment was very good. But, well, their cost is high too, but 515,000. But their ridership per day is like 30, is like double compared to ours. So, you know, their their riderships is higher and maybe that's why they charge more. But, yeah, if Southland is not interested, I guess then we stop with the First Transit. But I think, yeah, we'll just try to figure out, is there you know, a a combination of this dial-ride van services and also maybe taxi services? And we can save some money on that, you know, because basically, I think if it's within five miles radius, we can save a lot of money using taxi services.
Do you have any comment for Rebecca?
We'd be happy to look into the into the taxi service. And see if that would be a cost savings for us. I will say that with First Transit, in previous years, there were many, I understand what you're talking about in terms of the kind of complaints that we received from from riders. I will be honest that, and actually, he's on the call now, and I'm not just saying this because he's on the call now, but now that Zach Duke Magin has been on with their team, we have not received nearly those those complaints. And so what they're, what what I think needs to happen or or may need to happen is to is to continue to grow that ridership. And to to grow that that trust, if you will, with the with the clientele. And I think some of that will have to happen regardless after COVID, just because people have some of our writers, our regular writers have been, you know, are going to have some concern and be very cautious coming back and wanting to ride public transit again after COVID. So there've been some that have been consistent, obviously, during this time and and then others that have been more cautious.
So especially during COVID, you know, a lot of people don't want to share rights, you know, because you share with some other people in a van and it's the chances to get, you know, infected is quite high and and they probably rather allow call a taxi cab and I can write by myself, you know, even though taxi cab can be share a rise too. And I can cut down the expenses. But I remember, you know, those complaints from the previous writers. You know, I remember they tried to book a doctor's appointment and, you know, it's a Thursday, they they say, well, no, it's next Tuesday. They have to wait so many days, you know, maybe four or five days before they can, you know, book the ride. So that's one of the complaint that that we know. And of course, you know, there's some others, but I I I think, you know, over these years, maybe they have improved their services and so it will be better to look at the survey reports. It looks like the the comments are pretty good. They are satisfied with their services right now. But however, I think the cost, you know, it's just yeah, it's just kind of I would say reasonable. It's a kind of out of control and 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 if there's another way that we can do a reasonable say service for our seniors. Yeah, maybe we should look into it, you know, and and I'm sure First Transit, they they also have connection with the taxi rides also, you know, so maybe it can come up with a proposal. And, you know, we can lower number, you know, instead of a, yeah, 500,000, that's that's a lot of money. And yeah, I wish we can have a better solution, but I think if we ask First Transit and to come up with a better number. And I, you know, I think we we will approve, but however, right now, it's just, you know, kind of say, hey, we'll stop with you and you just ask whatever the whatever amount of money you want, you know, it's just kind of not a good situation for the city. So I think we can look into another combination of services.
Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are along the lines of Councilmember Poo. I really think we could do a better job with this as a staff. And it's not, it's not a complaint or, you know, anything against staff. I just think we've been stuck in this position for many years. And I know Metro is working on their next gen bus program. And they're trying to solve problems like this, cities like ours where we, like Jason said, we're four miles from the closest real rail hub. We don't have a lot of bus service in our town. You know, we're not like bus heavy. We have a few lines coming through here. But I think if we if we do partner up with Metro, make some calls down there, their their next gen has some micro transit in in it. And I believe they're going to have some grants for cities like us because they can't really do fixed fixed bus service for us, fixed route service. They're really looking at that last mile. And when they say last mile, it doesn't literally mean the last mile. Like Jason, there's a five mile radius to their plan. And I think if we leverage that, we could do something like Monrovia. And Metro actually is partnering with another rideshare service besides Lyft and Uber. And they're going to, I think they're going to be exclusive to Metro and then to cities. But something like that, I mean, if we limit the reimbursement to must be a five mile ride, Uber is 10 bucks, 12 bucks, 14 bucks when it gets to peak on a five mile ride. And if we're talking 50 bucks, the round trip maxed out is $30. We're saving big chunks of money right off the end. And it's it's almost on demand. It's it's, you don't have to schedule the day before, schedule the week before, you know, usually a half hour wait maximum. So I really think, yes, we're going to have to and I would say this is more of a a value that we have to provide to the people that are not able to drive or otherwise get around in our city. So there's some value here, but the cost is higher than the value. So we have to fill that gap somehow. We have to be creative. I think Monrovia was kind of up there. They're not the most creative and say, hey, let's go to Lyft. And I know Lyft has a municipal program as well. It's a little different. But I thought we charged $3 instead of 50 cents or $2, or I think Monrovia started at $1 and it worked its way up to $3 is the is the cost to the rider. I think if we were, did a little research there, I think six months or a year from now, we come back and we won't be having this discussion again. I just think a little creativity could solve this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Ding?
Yes, okay. Actually, I I just remember the like, I think two years ago or three years ago, I, the community service commissioner, we already discussed, like, use the Uber or Lyft. I understand that right now because the, for the iRider, because the proposition A, the local fund, so have to dedicate like this kind of service. Okay, but I I have, if we really do that, okay, I just want to asking if we have the like a fixer-up like the council member who mentioned before. So did you have any, 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 any like a proposal, like how much cost?
Let me clarify. I did not say fixed route.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, maybe I hear wrong. Okay. Okay, so but you know why? Okay, I just think about it based on our city current development. So it looks like a lot of the, like mixed use and probably, so we, for the long run, we we need, probably need to think about some the fixer-up. Probably, yeah, it's not just service our senior, it also serves our whole community. So, yeah, that's that's my some comments. So maybe if we can do the research, especially like some some bus area, they no, 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 no bus over there, like especially for our Mission District, right, don't have any, any, any bus can go there, you know? So, yeah, if if we can study that, how much cost? So if if similar the cost, so maybe we can think about it, yeah.
Councilmember Ding, thank you for those comments. Again, as as was mentioned in the report, and I think as we addressed earlier, I I think a fixed route and looking at a fixed route would need to be separated from the dial-a-ride program. I, from our understanding and in conversation with our seniors who utilize this program, that that would not necessarily meet their needs for going to doctor's appointments and going to shopping and and different visits that they have, that that fixed route may not accommodate that. And so I think we we need to understand that that would be something that would be separate and looked at separately. And and maybe with the continued discussion about about dial-a-ride and what that looks like for our city, maybe that ends up being where there are additional Prop A funds available that could then go toward a fixed route. We've not looked at that at this time to know what those costs are.
Okay.
And or and or even what those routes would be. I think that would be, that would be a much larger project than I venture to say that that may not be within, in community services, that would be probably one of those larger transportation planning projects that we're discussing and what those routes would be and and would involve in other departments than just mine.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's the same thing as for the most that I, council members think, we still think about it, the cost, it's too much. So compare with the current, if we, everybody know that Uber, Lyft, it's much more less the cost. So is any, yeah, so I don't maybe we do the more research or that's like, like the council, they say regarding the, if we go to Metro Station, so because they, we looks like we little bit far away for the Metro Station. If they're limited to us for our city, I think it's not a fear. We we also dislike the policy. I wouldn't let the Metro know that because we, we are locations a little bit far away with the Metro. They should be support us to do some fun for help us, right? It's not like because we are far away, because if we're far away, because I think our city is unlucky because the they, the metro, it's, it's it's under, under 210, I don't need the 210, yeah, that's no choice. We cannot choice that, right? For the, for the, for the location. So probably, yeah, we can, yeah, can, asking the metros how they can help us. Let them know our voice, you know?
I can mention too that I I do know there was a Metro survey that we completed recently for our city. I'll be honest, that many of those questions were not actually posed. There were not questions about the the location of Metro stations to your city and those sorts of things. It was primarily about the senior programs that 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 we provide. So there was much of the information about our dial-a-ride program that was provided. There was no indication and and there's not been any indication yet where that is going and where that might lead. But there was a survey that was completed recently.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, I know, but but if this, I I think it should be tied with senior program too, because the sometimes the senior, they want to take Metro too, right? So they want a little, not just a narrow down to the our San Gabriel City, probably they need to go to outside city to 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 visit or shopping, whatever. Yeah, it's it's definitely to help with senior too, you know, if they can think about our, our, our distance, yeah.
I I think too, it's, we don't have that, we don't have that data showing that at this point. I think it's you know, some of this may also be us talking about what type of seniors we're looking at, right? So if we're looking at kind of older generation seniors, they may not be interested in in taking Metro and going to other, other cities or other agencies or downtown LA. If we're talking more baby boomer seniors, they may be interested in something more like that and kind of getting out and exploring and utilizing public transit. So we don't have that data to show at this point that how our seniors are using it. That's not to say that's not the case, but we just don't have that that data to show that at this point.
So this kind of data, we need to do some survey or how can we do this kind of data?
Yes, we could do, we can do surveys. I, unfortunately, as you know, with surveys, you only get a limited amount of replies. We can try and do surveys with that. I don't know if we would get the information specifically that that you would be looking for.
All right. Okay, understand it. Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. So, um I know from my perspective, I mean, it's clear tonight that we're going to need to maybe go back and we're asking staff to go back and see if there's some hybrid or something that's much more cost effective. But one of the areas I I looked at, you know, I agree with a lot of the comments from the council is if you look at 2019, because of course, 2020 COVID, but the no-shows are pretty high. You're looking at month to month, about two no-shows per day. And, you know, we're still paying for that. And so I'm not sure as we move forward and trying to find alternatives. You know, one of the issues is how do we handle people who just make the phone call and never show up? Because that is taking the space from someone else. It's also, it's a cost that's being incurred by the city. So when we do have a hybrid, you know, how does that hybrid address those kind of calls that are being made? It was about, you know, we have about a ridership of, let's say, 10,000. And out of, and then you have a separate column here, 647 no-shows. And it's about 60 per month. So I would like that to be also looked at. It's just something doesn't make sense. It's just very, very high. And so, and and, you know, hopefully, Rebecca, there's some kind of resource out there, whether you contact Monrovia, you contact Metro, you contact some other kind of transportation agency that could help in finding out if there's a better way providing these type of services to our elderly and those that have disabilities. Because my concern is that a Lyft or Uber, wherever the case may be, might be more difficult. Because I think those who are older, who have disabilities, there is some kind of comfort that they do get from seeing the same face over and over again, because I know our our staff there, the turnover is very low. I guess there's more, the drivers have been there. One, I think, has been there for 30 years. The other one's been there for 16 years. So Um, I guess there's more, um, the drivers have been there, you know, one I think's been there for thirty years, the other one's been there for sixteen years, so there is that familiarity, but, you know, at what cost? And so, um, so, um, unless, um, I see councilmember who would like to say some comments, but I, I'd like to see if you can maybe bring this back and see what other options we may be able to entertain, councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Mary, yeah, I was just going to offer, I'd be happy to work with staff to see if, um, we can get more documentation uh, from Metro, if that's, if that's part of the, you know, the effort here, just to see how they're implementing their rideshare or their, what they're calling Metro Micro, the micro transit, um, system that councilmember Harrington mentioned, um, you know, at least their models that we can, we can look at.
Is there any, any other comments from anyone, Mark?
Oh, you muted, Mark.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, my only concern is in the interim period, and I wanna make sure we don't have a disruption in services for our, our residents and especially our seniors in the interim. So, um, are we talking about, uh, trying to get something done in the next couple of weeks and months, or are we talking about looking at a, a one-year contract instead of a three-year contract and bringing something back to council with a hybrid option as soon as possible? Are we, uh, are you directing us to go work with First Transit to see if they'll extend their month-to-month for several months? Or, or the latter, are we able to look at a one-year contract, which is what they originally proposed?
If I might, um, this, hold on, let me just need to get the, uh, packet back, the current contract expires on, or we've just been extended to, uh, I thought it was to the end of this fiscal year, is that not correct?
It's not, in fact, the RFP went out in October and they actually, uh, First Transit has generously extended that to help us what, during this time when we've negotiated with them, um, after receiving the, the one-year, uh, proposal that was significantly higher than where we're at. So, it actually would, would need to be Right, with, with, with their monthly approval, if you will.
Okay. Yeah, I would suggest continuing on a month-to-month basis, if it's a short-term contract till the end of the fiscal year, that, I think that would allow us enough time to be able to see what other options, uh, other models we might be able to, um, implement. Um, if the, if First Transit was amenable to that and able to continue to do the service, um, on the current basis, then, uh, then I think that that would, you know, make sure that those, those who need the service, um, are still taken care of and while we're still evaluating.
And fiscal year means June thirtieth, just for clarification.
Yeah, this is David Smith, can you hear me now, I moved to a cell phone.
Yes, that's better.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so while we're absolutely, uh, full in as a partner and wanna continue and, and willing to work with you, um, we, to continue on a month-to-month basis, we would have to do some negotiations on our current pricing, because uh, as mentioned, our labor costs have gone up significantly over the last couple of years, and again, minimum wage went up January first, and, and we've already extended now for the first two months, uh, with, uh, rates from, uh, an, an older year, so to speak, um, but we could work on a nominal increase as we work through this process. I also wanted to let you know that we're obviously well-versed with, um, micro transit services that we operate, uh, as well as working with Lyft, uh, or taxis, but those subsidy programs, we can work with you on, but those are policy programs that would have to be put in place by the city. Uh, Madam Mayor, if the council will permit, I would suggest that we continue this, or, or, uh, we'll take this back up again on the sixteenth of, of February, so in two weeks. And, uh, Director Perez and I can, can work with First Transit to get whatever that, we'll negotiate that normal increase for as low as we can to lock us in till the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll work with all of you to come back with options for a longer-term solution, if that works for the council.
Okay, yeah, that, that works, is there any objections? Yeah, I see now, okay, well, thank you to everyone who was present, and that concludes this agenda item. Let's get to our last one, uh, next item, please.
Item E, hardware replacement and software migration to existing computer-aided dispatch and records management system. Presentation will be made by Police Captain Fabian Valdez.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Okay, so, uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Approval for funds is being sought to upgrade the police department's outdated computer-aided dispatch and records management system. The Sangueiro Police Department's current computer-aided dispatch and records management systems were purchased in nineteen ninety-eight from its developer, Visionaire. Visionaire was purchased by Tritech, who eventually merged with three other companies to become Central Square. Software upgrades for our current computer-aided dispatch and records management systems have significantly slowed as Visionaire software is considered a heritage by Central Square and limits its maintenance to software malfunctions and regulatory changes. Additionally, our computer-aided dispatch and records management systems are not fully integrated, thus creating workflow bottlenecks and inefficiencies. Furthermore, our current computer-aided dispatch and records management system will not be compliant with federal and state statutory mandates, which go in January twenty twenty-two. These statutory mandates include the California Department of Justice's Expanded Cybers California Incident-Based Reporting System, which is the California's version of the Federal Bureau of Investigation's NiBRS National Incident-Based Reporting Systems, and the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, RIPA, Assembly Bill nine fifty-three. The computer-aided dispatch and records management system and software conversion solutions proposed by staff is only available from our current vendor, as they are the sole source and owner of this proprietary software upgrade. The system, professional suites, have advantages over our current outdated system. These advantages include having a managed service approach, which includes server hardware support and replacement on top of expected application support, operating our computer-aided dispatch management systems as a single integrated database system, complying with legislative mandates including NiBRS, Cybers, and RIPA, strong research and development investments with new functionalities released every quarter, saving staff time as a result of operational efficiencies created with the integration of computer-aided dispatch and records management system, including going paperless with police officers filing of digital crime and incident reports, increasing transparency by allowing this, by allowing staff the timely access and ability to quickly redact digital reports, shortening the time it takes the police department to release reports under the Public Records Act. Staff recommends the city council approve funding and upgrade to the department's computer-aided dispatch and records management systems, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Central Square on the city's behalf. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, does any councilmember have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? I see now, hey, announcement, the time for public comment on this item is now closed, Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Mayor, we have no comments for this item.
Thank you, council deliberation discussion, anyone have any comments? Clarification, councilmember Pooh.
Uh, yeah, just wanted to confirm Captain Valdez, so can the purchase, can the purchase with laser, laser fish still be canceled? Or was it never, um, implemented?
Sure, implemented, thus it's been canceled, and we are using the funds from Laserfish to go into this new program.
Right, and then I imagine the increased cost of this system then would be factored into the P D budget for, uh, next fiscal year.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, well, I was, um, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, just have one simple question, so, you know, we, uh, use some of the funding to pay, and then we owe uh, thirty-five thousand, and then we at the, uh, I believe it's July first, two thousand twenty-two, uh, we have to come up with the payment of hundred and nineteen, almost hundred and twenty thousand. And from which account that we gonna, uh, get that money, hundred and twenty thousand, is it from staff development account, or what, uh, which account are we gonna have that?
Okay, so this year, the way we're gonna fund the project is through Laserfish, so every year, we're allotted, uh, approximately fifty thousand dollars for this software program. Now, there are five percent increases every year as a, as a result of inflation, so next year, which would be, uh, July first, twenty twenty-one, we would owe about fifty-three thousand dollars, so the way we would go about paying for it in the future is through budgetary allotments in the police budget, we will be requesting that money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Great, any other questions? Well, Captain, yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I just want, I mean, will, will upgrading to this new system then bring us up to speed with sort of best practices and, 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 you know, what sort of currently used, um, within the industry?
Absolutely, currently, we're using technology that's almost twenty-five years old, so if you were to equate that to, uh, an entertainment console, it'd be like playing Atari twenty-six hundred versus playing Xbox three sixty live. So we're playing currently on an Atari twenty-six hundred.
Only some of us, uh, understand that reference, let's say we're, you're using a, you know, a DOS machine that, with that little blinking green light where rest, the rest of us have moved to more advanced technologies. No, I understand the need for the, for the purchase, I just wanna make sure that, you know, spending the additional money will actually really give you the tools that you need, and, and sounds like, you know, obviously you wouldn't have selected this system if you didn't feel that way, but I wanna confirm that, you know, um, that it's, um, upgrading, upgrading the P D to the latest and greatest, so thank you.
Absolutely, sir.
Vice Mayor, did you have an additional question?
Oh, no, I just wanna move the motion to approve this.
But maybe just make a comment real quick, before we, we move forward, just real quick, Captain, I, I just wanted to verify. So the, the last time we've had, we purchased the system with nineteen ninety-nine, and so with that system, we won't be able to meet any of the mandates that go into effect in January twenty twenty-two, so really, this is, it's not a, I mean, this is something that we must do if we wanna be in compliance.
Absolutely, at this point, we, we had one of several options, some of the other options were i- in hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we did what we felt was most economical, most efficient in order to bring us to compliance, as well as make us efficient in terms of our operational efficiency, plus being able to, um, more quickly, uh, respond to public records requests as they come in, because one of the plans here is to go from actual physical paperwork when we file reports to now it being digital. So when it's redacting, it would be much quicker to redact.
Welcome to the twenty-first century, thank you for your department, um, for, for, um, being creative as always, and, and really making that dollar stretch and then making sure we were compliant, so I, I was really concerned when I read that. But, um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and move to through, Vice Mayor, did you wanna second? Oh, and we, okay, well, we'll just have discussion, Tony?
Yeah, yeah, Tony, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, yeah, definitely, I, the, the software upgrade, that's, yeah, it's important for the current technology. The, I just wanna wonder, okay, is it this software, uh, uh, upgrade, it's, uh, our re-existing the hardware, it's supported this new software, or we need to, uh, upgrade all the hardware for the police department?
Not, not all the hardware in the police department, our CAD system is a standalone. So what we're gonna do is we're going to upgrade our twenty-five-year-plus hardware system with state-of-the-art hardware, and that's all part of the package.
Oh, so you, the, the, the budgets already include a hardware and a software?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, that, that's I wanna clear about, okay. All right, and, uh, and another question, so, yeah, so currently you say the, the wait database, it's, it's two separate database. So after upgrade, just so single database, it's more, more centralized, right?
Yes, sir, so what happens now is when police officers write reports, they fill in information, and then our records department has to re-input that same information, so it's double the work. But now with this new system, it will all be integrated, so as we go paperless, do digital reports, the information that is, that is, uh, inputted by the officers will automatically populate our records management system and our systems that run our detective bureau as well as evidence, so it's a seamless integration, this is long overdue.
Okay, yeah, I agree, because the, uh, like I say, if, if you have two database, also increase like a typo, mistake, re-entry, but right now, it's, yeah, when, one single database, it's more, more help to accurate system. Another thing is, okay, the, the server, it's, it's in the police department, the hardware, or it's a use the currently like a new technologies, like, it's like a claw base?
The server will pre-prodominately, um, housed the hardware in the department. However, uh, as part of our service agreement, there are I T staff, Central Square's I T staff will maintain it, subsequently, our I T no longer has to really get involved with maintaining this software and hardware, so it alleviates the workload that we currently have. Now transfers it to the, to the vendor, who are experts in this area.
Okay, yeah, that's good things to, but, but my concern, okay, so because it's single database, so how do you backup? So it's just in case, you know?
Backup is done through Central Square.
Okay. Central Square, H, that's meaning they have the claw-based, the system or something like that?
Yes, they, they do back it up.
Okay, yeah, that's a, this is for the safety, security, uh, the purpose.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so my experience always get backup, backup, don't, otherwise we lost the data, it's, it's hard to recover, you know? Yeah, okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And so we have, thank you, councilmember, so we have a first and a second, Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Liang. Mayor Manchaca.
Aye.
Motion passed by vote of five zero.
Okay, next item, please.
Madam Mayor, next is our second public comment section, and we do not have any public comment.
Okay, next item, city managers' report, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a very, very quick comment tonight. I wanna implore the community and those who are listening to please not get together this weekend for the Super Bowl. I think for the healthcare workers and first responders and everybody else out there, we're finally getting through the surge from Christmas and New Year's and Thanksgiving, and so please watch it at home, watch it on your big screen and enjoy it from there. And let's not have another super spreader event, with that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mark, okay, next item, council comments and conference slash meeting reports, are there any to share or discuss? Vice Mayor Liu?
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, I attend the CPA's conference and the, uh, current California Treasurer, Fiona Ma. She commented about how small business can get help. First one, of course, is the California Relief Grant. So it's ca-reliefgrant.com. Another one is long from iBank. So it's ibank.ca.gov. Okay, and third one is the California Capital Access Program. And, um, yeah, if they can, uh, look online and see if they can qualify for all these programs. Another thing is I want to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year and this year is the Year of Cow. And this cow is supposed to bring everyone good luck, good fortune, and good health. So, yeah, Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Uh, Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, towards the end of January, I was invited to attend, uh, virtually online, of course. The, um, it's called the California Association of Human Rights Organizations. And so I was able to sort of just talk about our here commission. And then there were a number of agencies across, around the state that were interested in learning more about it. So I, I do feel like it's a really good step in the right direction. I'm looking forward to, um, you know, the, that commission, um, getting up, you know, off the ground and, and starting its meetings. I would like to say I, I agree with the comment earlier, made earlier about some recognition of Black History Month. There are a number of other, um, heritage months that are recognized federally. And, you know, these are all, I think, important parts of our, uh, community. And as Vice Mayor Liu said, um, Happy Lunar New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Any other counsel? So, see, oh, Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, yes, okay, uh, yeah, it's definitely, yeah, for the next, next week, it's for the Lunar, uh, Lunar New Year, uh, the Happy New Year. We also like, uh, we have public comments, uh, next the, uh, New Year, okay, so it remind, it reminded us. So, yeah, I hope we city can consider all the, as the group, the whatever, they are, they are, the festive celebration for our community too. Yeah, and, uh, and, uh, community, I hope they, everybody, it's be safe, stay safe, okay? But Lunar New Year always like go up, traditionally always go out to shopping for the new year food, new year, like, present, okay? But still suggest the state, uh, safety. And, uh, yeah, when you go out to shopping, shopping in the San Gabriel City to help our, our city, okay? Happy Lunar New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. And same, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. Keep an eye out, we will be having a virtual event to celebrate our Lunar Festival. It'll be our seventh annual. So obviously it'll be a little different this year, but I think it'll just be equally as exciting. And, um, also would like to recognize the public comment that was made earlier about Black History Month. And so I think we're all trying to find ways to celebrate all cultures and all of the cities. It is a work in progress and the Lunar Festival is only seven years old. I know the, um, uh, the animals sweat those and, you know, that's also new too. So as a city, we are growing and we're trying to find ways to, to celebrate. So, um, please be patient with us. Before I adjourn, I can want to recognize, um, we did have the passing of Bill Shaw. And so we are gonna be adjourned in his memory. We'll give a little bit of background about Bill. Bill Shaw was the Managing Director of a Mission Playhouse, then known as the San Gabriel Civic Auditorium for 28 years and was a volunteer for 12 years before that. His love for the theater and his career at the Civic actually started long before. However, when he arrived as an usher and then as a stagehand in high school. During this time at the Civic, he directed many musicals for Temple City High School and went on to found, find the, uh, be the founding, uh, founder of the Music Theater of South, Southern California with Roger Locky and choreographer Ricky Lugo in 1984. He directed over 50 musicals and loved nothing more than seeing students and audiences enjoy the theater. Bill retired from the city in 2007. And with that, we wish him, his fam, well, his family, um, strength and courage during this difficult time. The next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, at 6:30 P.M. Meeting again.